All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Today...
Wait a minute.
Feedback, I hear it now.
Everybody.
Okay, Chris. See you. Okay, I think we're set now. Amanda, thank you so much. Okay, so I want... This is the call to order and welcome. This Monday evening is a meeting for us to discuss the work that we've been doing in the committee setting. And so with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's begin to introduce ourselves. We'll start with our clerk. Ariel Smith, Lead City Clerk.
Anthony Fox, Interim City Attorney.
Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent the dynamic District Four.
Ooh, dynamic, come on, dynamic. Marjorie Molina, District Five.
Jane Mitchell, at large.
Dimplen Shmera, at large.
Mike Lyles, Mayor.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Malcolm Graham, District Two.
Ed Riggs, District Seven.
Edwin Peacock, District Six.
Luana Mayfield, Councilmember at large.
All right, thank you all for... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, y'all. Victoria Watlington, at large.
I think I've just seen Victoria on camera so long today. So, thank you, my apologies, Ms. Watlington. So, we're going to have... We have had this opportunity, but I thought that we might go ahead and have an update from the City Council Work Group on appointments to the Metropolitan Public Transportation Authority. And I'm going to recognize the three members of that? Or I'll have the chair recognize the membership.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Let me recognize the three musketeers who've been working feverishly on this great assignment that the mayor gave us. Mr. Ed Riggs, District Seven, and the one and only Councilmember Luana Mayfield, at large. And so today, Mayor Council, we gave a great presentation to the transportation plan development. Through that feedback, I think we've even made the process better based on some recommendations we've made. So, the work group, and we're going to start off with Ken Liz. We're going to let the interim city attorney go through his presentation, and then I will go through the work group recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. Liz is teeing up the presentation that will talk to you about the Trans Authority Board of Trustees' Appointment Overview. First of all, this... The composition of the Board of Trustees for the new authority should the referendum pass will have 27 members appointed by various... The city, the county, six towns, the state, and state government leaders. The city has 12 of those 27 members. However, the city's appointments are regulated by statute, and the statute provides that three of those appointments are recommendations. Two of the Business Alliance, one of the Foundation for the Carolinas. There's also an appointment that... A requirement that one of the appointees must have small business experience. And then, the next condition that's imposed is one that was agreed to by the city and the county pursuant to a memorandum of understanding that was in it into the... About a party a while back. And under that agreement, there was a commitment that one of the appointments for the city, as well as one for the county, will be an active cash user. The eligibility requirements that the clerk and I will review for all applications are those that are set out on the screen. One, any applicant must be a resident of Mecklenburg County. Then, two, there... It provides that no elected officials... No current elected officials may be appointed. The statute and the act specifically provides that no elected official may concurrently serve on the Board of Trustees of the new authority. And the new authority membership on that board will be a product of eventually identification, but appointment swearing-in, and that's not likely to occur until sometime in December before that following process will occur. The Payback Act does not speak to any prerequisites other than what I've mentioned previously as to the appointment process or any criteria. The other last one was that no lobbyists can serve or be a member of the authority or any family member of the lobbyists. Now, when you turn to experience and qualifications, the Payback Act is specific as to what members of the Board of Trustees shall have by way of demonstrated experience or qualifications. And it requires that they must have demonstrated experience or qualifications in the areas that are set out there on the screen. Those areas include law, finance, engineering, public transportation, urban planning, logistics, government, architecture, or economic development. The act does not go into any definition of what constitutes law, finance, engineering. And so that's going to be within the framework of this body to decide as they review the applications. With regards to experience and qualifications, the most asked question has seemed in the discussion I've witnessed has been around public transportation and what constitutes demonstrated experience and qualifications in the area of public transportation. We can only, as a court will do, look to a definition of what public transportation is, and there's a definition on the screen that provides that public transportation is a system of trains, buses, et cetera, that is paid for or run by government. The act does define public transportation system, and that definition is within the act. And I'll just call your attention to that definition. While it's fairly long, it does talk about, you know, things that may be expansive for your view of what public transportation is, and things like high-capacity vehicles, micro-transit car pools or van pools program, special transportation services that are often run by transit systems can certainly fall within that. Again, that's the only direction that the act gives you for the use of those terms. The application process, your clerk has developed an application process which aligns with the application process that this body has used for boards and commissions. Save the... Only exception is that there have been some provisions added to the application process that are dictated by the Payback Act. Things like allowing the applicant to speak to their qualifications in one of the enumerated fields, to speak to their demonstrated experience in one of the enumerated fields. The window for applications is open now, and it closes on the 13th of October, and then the council makes appointments on or by November 24th of 2025. Your back to the council member.
Any questions for interim city attorney? If there are none, Liz, can you then prepare the work group recommendations, and we can share that with council? Thank you, Liz. So, Liz, if you can, go ahead and turn to the first slide if you don't mind. Just to remind people how we got here, Mayor Lyles appointed a work group in an email on September 26th. She challenged us to find a process where council could approve appointments by November 8th. She twisted my arm and asked me to be chair, and I told her I need my side kegs, Councilmember Riggs and Mayfield. And the work group, we reported to the TPD today and got a lot of feedback from the committee that I will share with you later on. So, here's the framework for us. Applicants must reside in the Charlotte city limits. Stephanie Kelly, thank you so much. She's been notifying those applicants who only reside outside the city. They need to apply for the county. City council, we have 12 appointees total. We're recommending two mayor appointments and seven council appointments. One must have small business experience, and one must be an active cash user per the MOU. And then we have some partners who are joining us as part of the appointment process. The Business Alliance will have two, and Foundation for the Carolinas will have one. Councilman McGraham, you brought up a good point to make sure we communicate with our partners, and I have made calls and asked that both of them would make their appointments prior to council on November 10th. October 13th, as the interim city attorney mentioned, application closes, and the city clerk will continue to coordinate with the county clerk to identify any applicants that apply for both city and county. More recommendation, the work group? We're very clear on what expertise and talent that we're looking for based on the Payback. As you can see, law, finance, engineering, public transportation, urban planning, logistics, government architect, and economic development. Part of our conversation then were, and I give Councilmember Mayfield a lot of credit, what would be our guiding principle? And one thing with seven appointees, we have seven districts rep, and so we would like district representation be part of our guiding principle. Definitely a transit rider and someone who uses it, and more important, the skills. Councilmember Riggs reminded us that this authority is like setting up a corporation. So, let's make sure we have the right skill sets to be... To manage an authority. Next slide. So, October 16th, we will share all the applications that will be verified with the full council. And then here's the hard work, and let me thank our work group in advance. October 20th through the 31st, we have allocated 52 hours to schedule interviews for applicants. 25 minutes per applicant with a 20-minute Q and A questions, and a five-minute for us to do the evaluation. We have reserved already room 278 and 280 here at the Government Center for the applicant... For the interviews to take place. Councilmember Johnson, you brought up a good point earlier today about transparency, and so we're going to set this up like a committee meeting so it would be a virtual options for people to view the interview. We want to show flexibility. We know some can meet between eight to five, but then we need to set up some evening hours. And so when you look at our schedule, we have two evening days per week, October 20th and 24th, then October 27th through the 31st. It is our goal, then, this work group will provide recommendations to the full council on November 6th for you to have considerations. Then November 10th, we will have nominee... Nomination, our business meeting with a November 24th final vote. And at that particular time, we should know the Charlotte Region Business Alliance as well as the Foundation for the Carolinas. Discussions? Any questions for the work group? Ms. Assamir?
Go back to the previous line. So, would we... Before we vote, would we know who is appointed by the Alliance and Foundation?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And how about the mayor, mayoral appointments?
Yes.
So, we would know ahead of time?
Ahead of time. And so we make... To... And I give the committee credit because they said we want to make sure if there's gaps, then that will help council make the right appointment.
Right, exactly. Would we know county commissions appointees or no?
So, they don't point to December 3rd, December 2nd? So, we're going first. The county want to point to December 2nd.
Got it. Well, theirs is outside of the city, so...
Exactly. And that's the point Councilmember Mayfield brought up. And on your desk, councilmembers, you have, as of today, 71 applicants have already submitted applications, and we think that there'd be probably up to about 90 when all said and done by Monday.
That's all I have. Thank you. All right. Ms. Watlington?
Okay, I just had a question about the business appointments, process-wise. Are those appointments going to happen through our process? Or are they just going to be something that they handle externally?
Oh, I'm sorry, which ones?
The business appointments.
Before.
Oh, no, they will handle their own process. Business Alliance and Foundation for the Carolinas. Yes, ma'am.
We will know before.
We would know before who they selected, but they have their own process.
Okay, and I'm just curious, how is that recorded?
How is that recorded?
Because I mean, I can reasonably understand how hours will be made and recorded via the public record, and the counties, and the legislators, and the governors. But then for the private organizations, where does that... Like procedurally, where does that go?
So, I'm going to try to take a stab, and Stephanie, you correct me. I think we will see those nominations, and then she will have it for the record. Those that were received from the Foundation for the Business Alliance. Did I get that correct? Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Ooh, I ate my Wheaties this morning.
I'm sorry, I just want to understand. So, did I understand this correctly? So, everyone will apply to the city, and then the Alliance and the Foundation will have their application packages?
Yes. So, the Alliance will have two appointees, Foundation for the Carolinas will have one, and they will have their own process separate from ours.
Oh, so, okay, so our process...
It's just strictly for, if you stay in districts one through seven.
Got it.
Just for clarification, because I don't even know if I realized that. So, the Alliance will actually appoint from this list?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, I thought so. So, this list is just us?
Just us.
And then they have their own separate and apart? Okay.
As well as the county and all of the others.
So, let me reiterate that, too. That's a good point. So, Foundation for the Carolinas will appoint one, and the Charlotte Region Business Alliance will appoint two, and they have their own process separate from ours. My colleague, Councilmember...
Thank you. Following up Councilmember Mitchell, and so that we're all on the same page. What we have recognized is that we may have individuals that have applied and shown interest through all the bodies, through the state, through the county, through us, through the Alliance, through Foundation. The reason since they have, according to the Payback, these designated seats, that's why we're working with them to find out who their people are. So, if those names pop up on ours, we know that they've already been identified. So, along with the ones that we have highlighted here that are outside of the city Charlotte proper limits, that way we can make sure that we're looking at a clean sheet of individuals so that we don't make the mistake of identifying somebody that's already been identified in another space. And that was also part of the conversation in committee this morning regarding the mayor's appointments. We want to know so that we can, one, be very transparent as well as very intentional about who is going to be the voices that are represented in the city of Charlotte. So, even though they have their own process, just like the state did, and they just announced their people, we know that we shouldn't see those people's names pop up on our list.
And let me add another note, just, and Councilmember Johnson brought this, I think it was an excellent point. Starting tomorrow at 4:00, all names that have applied will be on our website. And so... Oh, they're there now? Oh, gone, Stephanie. So, they're there now. So, if you go to apply for this board, and there's another button you can click, you can see all 71 names. So, going forward, it will be updated every day at 4:00 P.M.
Where can we find it?
It's on... Stephanie gave it to...
Stephanie, tell me.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
You can find the web link that includes that PDF at the... Where people go to apply for boards. So, they go to city clerk, apply for a board, there's an icon on there that says list of MP TA applicants, and it's a PDF of current applicants.
Is that a repeat that?
Stephanie, can you come up in the microphone? Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I'm sorry. You can go to the city clerk's website, where you go to find out information about applying for advisory boards and commissions, and click on that link. And there is a icon there, a button there that says a list of MP TA applicants.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman McGraham?
Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell. And I want to thank the steering committee for the work they've done thus far. I think it's good. We're a couple of questions, just for clarification. And one is to the attorney. We talked earlier today in reference to the council having the ability to withdraw names once appointed. And for whatever reason, we want to take back a recommendation, a nominee that serves on the board that we can, and that hypothetically, if the mayor made an appointment, we wanted to call back a member for reasons we could. Does that also apply to the... And the mayor would make the reappointment?
Right.
Does that also apply to the Alliance and the Foundation in those three appointments?
I think the termination might apply, but the ability to reappoint would still fall within them. I need to look at the act specific for the termination. I don't think it limits termination to any particular group. It just gives the council the ability to terminate, because even though the process provides that all the names of those three parties come through the council, but you must follow their recommendation.
That's fine.
And that's the only thing it provides.
I just want to put that on record that we do have that ability, but they will have to make a reappointment for whatever reason, for cause we decide that a particular member needs to recall. We can do that, but that appointment body will make a subsequent reappointment to an individual. individual. And so, thank you. And also I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for moving so quickly in reference to reaching out to some of the other organizations that will be making appointments. I think it's really, really important that we kind of know their appointments so that we can fill gaps, right? And so I'm not sure if you talked to our good friend Governor Stein yet, but we, it would be nice to, for him to do, follow suit so we can kind of know how the table's being set so we can fill in those gaps as well. So thank you very much for, for moving on that so quickly. And then secondly, while we have 70 applications, I know you've already, and we talked about this, that we want quality over quantity.
That's right.
Right? So 70 sounds good, but we need to make sure that those individuals really meet the test for, for service. Because it's going to be a lot of work the first year and a half, two years. It's going to be a lot of work. And so we need to make sure people understand that this is not a fluff board. It's going to be a working board for the first two years, setting up the administration of this organization. So I love the numbers, but I hope that you and your committee will really scrub down to, to separate the best from the rest. And I think the interviewing process will alleviate that and hopefully council members can come and be a part of that.
That's right.
Because we all have different criterias, different things are important to us in reference to selecting an individual member. So I think the process makes sense. Thank you for your work and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you, Councilman Graham.
Councilmember Graham, I just want, if I can follow up with you. I found a specific language in the PAVE Act as it relates to removal. And it says each member of the board, of the Board of Trustees may be removed with or without cause by the appointing authority. So since we are the appointing authority for the 12 members, then we would have the ability to remove a member with or without cause.
And then that hypothetically, that was the foundation that we recall, they would then reappoint a new member.
Then they will reappoint.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier, I thought that I heard you say that you all, that the committee would do the interviewing and then you would present the top three candidates to full council? Is that what, no?
No.
Okay.
We, we have not settled on the number yet, no.
Well, top X council, are, are you, are we suggesting that this committee will make the final recommendations or will, at some point, all of council members be able to ask those questions? Because that was one of the concerns that was shared earlier, that we would want to be able to ask questions of candidates as well?
So, so let me address the first part, Councilwoman Johnson. I don't think we've came to a number, how many we would recommend. I think we're going to be a recommendation slate.
Okay.
But still, council has the ability, like we do the normal process, to vote for whoever they would like. But we, we at least wanted to let you all know, we have vetted, and this is a slate that we think will make a good authority.
Okay. So in other processes, the work group would make the recommendations for the slate and then the full council would interview the members of the slate?
Not the full council. The, the work group would be doing the, will be interviewing the candidates. Councils invited to attend the interview. Or to the point you brought up early, earlier, if we want an option to view it virtually.
Okay. I, I, I would, I would want, if you all want to interview the slate and then maybe recommend, recommend X number of people, three to five people, and then they come before full council. I mean, this process was defined by a small group of individuals, not the council. So is there room to tweak? Yes, there's room to tweak the process. Okay.
So she can, you can advocate for anyone on this list that you want to?
Exactly.
Even if they say?
That's right.
That they got people?
We're not taking away your ability.
If you got people on here or someone you see, you can, you can advocate for them.
Exactly.
Right. But that, that's, thank you. But that wasn't my question.
Oh.
Or the process suggested. I think you all understand what I'm saying. I mean, we've done it numerous times. We just did it. We just followed the process for the city attorney. So if there were a work group and then, once there are identified leaders or the top of the pack, then when is full council going to have the opportunity to interview those individuals?
Oh, you want to, ooh. I don't think, and I look at the work group, I don't think we factor in, let's say, for example, seven names we bring back and you, and then you want the entire council to interview just the seven we recommending? I don't even think we fact that in.
So James and Councilmember Johnson, I want to make sure that I think I'm hearing you. And James, Ed, we did actually talk about this, but just briefly in discussion. As far as when that 52 hours that's been identified for the interviews, that is the time, because again, we were trying to be respectful of people, jobs, family, whatever, for you to be a part of the interviewing process. My expectation was that that is the opportunity for full council to be a part of the interview process, to ask questions. I was not under the impression that we were going to bring you all back a slate. We've done the vote by identifying, here's the criteria that the payback identified, here's the criteria that we've identified focusing on the city, having the conversation and negotiating instead of three and six, for us to be able to have seven and two, because we really only had nine seats, not really 12. So how do we be as representative as possible and having seven seats? Now's the time where, based on whether it's the morning, the afternoon, or the evening, or when someone can block out their whole day to be a part of all of them, to actually do the interview process and score on your own. Because this is just a snapshot. Each of these applications, and Stephanie, correct me, is seven pages. So 70 plus?
Plus the resume.
So 70 plus as of today, potentially 100, seven pages each. What are some of the criteria on the front end to help streamline this process and then deciding as a body, what attributes are we looking for and how do we try to identify, for me, gender parity, ethnicity parity, age parity, demographic parity, as well as someone that not only has some of the skills, but also is a bus rider? Not just for when you're coming uptown for entertainment purposes. Someone that actually utilizes it for your main form of transportation. So I was thinking that here, we presented the initial, but when it comes time for the actual interview process, over that 52 hours that we've said we've committed to, mainly they've committed to, 52 hours, that's when all of council gets to be a part. And we do similar to what we recently did and do our own little scoring as far as, hey, is there someone that was a standout for you in District Four based on the skill set, the different districts? Because honestly, that, if we have, if we agree with the type of, who is our ideal representatives and the diversity of that ideal representative, that would help to lead the conversation. But I didn't think that there was an expectation that three of us was going to narrow down 70 to 100 people and bring back to y'all, here's 20 that we think you should look at, pick seven. We did our part with this presentation. But now is, the next step is the actual interviewing, which again, we committed up to 52 hours. We're going to make sure all the times are available, but that's when full council gets to be a part of the interview process. And we get to do, the way we broke it down, we get to actually have discussion about the individual and do our own little scoring. If that helps.
I, I want to make sure Ms. Mayfield is saying that any council member can come in to this process with having any kind of conversation, that you want to have a deeper conversation if you just want to check off the boxes. So I think that's really the date and time for the full council to begin.
Over the 52 hours.
52 hours, right.
52 hours.
So I had Ms. Dimble, Ashmira, and then follow that, Ms. Watlington, and then Ms. Brown.
I want to make sure that I'm clear as to what this working group is doing. So from what I understand, that you are interviewing all the applicants that applied. Is that? I mean, I know that council members can attend if they want to, but the working group is interviewing all applicants. Is that correct?
I think our original intention, as we talked about it, was that we would identify the people that we thought were most likely to end up being finalists. But any member of council who doesn't see a name they like on that list would then nominate someone else.
Would add, got it.
Okay. I don't think we're going to interview every single person because there will be some who are obviously really not very competitive.
Right.
But, but nobody's going to be excluded that another member of council wants to put forward.
Got it. Okay. So you will all provide us a list and enough time?
And the times.
And enough time to make sure that we can add, if we want to add an individual?
Take a step further, Ms. Ashamir. Our goal, we're going to meet this week, so our goal is to have that list ready by Friday and so council can see who is scheduled for interviews.
Got it. And how long is the interview slot for, for a person?
So 20 minutes for Q and A and then five minutes for us to do the evaluation. Total 25.
So I wanted to follow up on something that Councilmember Graham brought up. Termination. So can you go back to the slide where you got the city appointments, 12, and then, I think it was one of the first slides?
There you go.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. So let's say out of, in a hypothetical scenario, we have, a city has 12 appointments total. Technically, it's not 12, it's seven, because, well, seven plus three by the mayor, or two by the mayor. So technically, it's nine. So Mr. Fox, you mentioned that, so let's say if we want to recall one by Business Alliance, for an example, would, would it go back to the Business Alliance or would it come to the city?
Well, the, the removal provision is only a paragraph long in the act. So it doesn't get into great specificity about removal. It just gives and confers upon the appointing authority their ability to remove. If you remove, though, then you go back to how do you appoint? The appointing is specific under the PAVE Act in that the Alliance has the ability, through our process, to recommend a person or individuals for appointment. And the act provides that we must, we must appoint those people as recommended by them.
So it'll go back to the appointment process? So it'll go back to the Alliance?
Right.
Okay. Ms. Watlington?
Thank you. That helped answer my question. Just for reference, I see it under 907(c) is where it says that, that it goes back to the appointing authority charged with the responsibility for making such appointments pursuant to Section 905. So yeah, it'll go back to the Alliance. But it sounds like we could end up in a do loop if we keep saying, nope, nope, nope. But that's neither here nor there. Two things. As it relates to this interviewing process, the sense that I got, and I just want to, I know we've, we've talked about it a few times, but I still feel like there's a couple of different versions floating around. I just want to make sure that every person who meets the basic requirements here, lives and has filled out the application to speak to their qualifications as outlined here, is entitled to an interview.
No. Uh-uh.
And so that, for me, is a little, I struggle with that simply because.
So Doc, let me see if we can meet you halfway. Our goal was try to, and Councilman Graham touched on it, try to go through all the applicants and try to pick out what we think is the quality of people serving an authority. We would show that list to the whole council. If you see someone on the list who you think should be added, then you can send us an email and say, I think John Doe needs to be added part of the interview process. And so we're not taking away opportunities, but the work group has agreed to kind of roll it by sleeve and kind of vet and make sure we have quality people moving forward.
And so we will see all of the applications in their entirety?
Yes. All seven pages and the resume, yes. You would still see those on November the 10th.
Okay. Okay. And then, thank you for that clarification. And then the only other thing that I wanted to lift up that I, because I think you've captured the items that were laid out in the committee this morning. The only other one is one that I brought up earlier I want to make sure that I raised. I just, I have not seen it in here specifically, legal authority to give our appointments to a mayor's seat. And so if the, if the group is good to move forward, I can support, but I just want to lift up that I would not be surprised if that was some challenge at some point, simply because the specifics, the specificity within which these appointments were made, down to the, the business community, you have to make this appointment upon the recommendation of so-and-so. So to give appointments away to another body, I just think that we maybe have a risk there. But, and I've heard what the attorney said earlier today, but again, I think this is a little bit different than simply determining whether or not we're going to whittle down the list through a subgroup or not. So I just wanted to put that on the record. But I think those are all of the. Yeah, sure. When we, what I'm talking about is that the, here, I'll just pull it up. That way it's directly from the.
And Mayor, I just, for the minutes, I just asked Dr. Watlington to clarify her last points of giving it to another body. I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah. So down here in the appointment, so in 905, wait, hold on. Yeah, yeah, 905, where it talks about the appointments and it says 12 members appointed by the governing body of the largest municipality in the county that created that authority, which would be the city council, who's the governing body of the largest municipality in the county, the city of Charlotte. At least three of these appointments must be made upon the recommendation of an entity that represents business interests in the county. So we've already talked through that. But obviously, the appointment itself is made by the raising of the council's hand based on a recommendation. At least one of the remaining nine appointments by the governing body must be an individual that has experience owning or operating a small business as identified, or excuse me, as defined in subdivision one of this subsection. And then two members appoint, and then it goes into the general assembly. So what I'm talking about here is where it says 12 members appointed by the governing body. With the business community, even though they have the recommendation, the actual appointment is made by the governing body. And so when I hear that we are saying that we want to allocate two seats to be appointed by another body, i.e. the executive office, the mayor, that feels like a departure from what's here. And again, I, I'm prepared to support, but I just am lifting up that this feels like a risk here.
So for clarification, and Attorney Fox, you can help with this, because in my interpretation is that because we are a council manager form of government, the mayor is part of the council. So because previous applicant, our current board appointment process gives the mayor's office, whoever the mayor is, the mayor is, the mayor's office a third of the votes. So that's why it was three votes and us having six. But what we did was reach out and have a conversation with the mayor to say, okay, two, instead of what traditionally has done, been done with our board process of what she agreed to, which gave us the ability to have seven seats instead of six seats.
So I would say to that, and I spoke to this a little bit this morning, the difference to me with that is that our other governing boards or our other boards and commissions either have an bylaws of a nonprofit that you'll have this seat, or we ourselves are deciding what the composition of that board is. And so that, to me, is clearly within our authority to decide where those seats come from. But it sits somewhere in a document, even on boards like the Housing Authority that have appointments from different bodies. Within their governing structure, it says where those appointments come from. And so that's totally fine. In this case, I'm saying if this is that document, I don't see it here. And as it relates to the mayor being a member of council, I think that the definitions in General Statute 160 would indicate that those are two different offices.
I think what you.
But again, like I said, just a risk. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What you're doing, you're parcelling out the actual action of this body. The action, be it two from the mayor and nine and seven from the council, will be the governing body's action that will be forwarded on, as well as the three from the authority. That will be the action of the governing body. I, I understand what you're, what you're looking at. You're looking at the power of the mayor versus the power of the council. And you're looking at the, the rote language of this, which talks about the governing
And you're looking at the rote language of this, which talks about the governing body making appointments. But the act also allows each of the Appointing Authorities to establish the appointing process consistent with what their processes are. The process here has been, from a traditional perspective, to allow the mayor to have some appointments. The, as I would see it, though, the mayor, if this actually were the past, the mayor would appoint two people. Those two people would be joined in with the people appointed by this council, and that would represent the action of the governing body going forward.
So similar to what's in here with the business group, would it be upon a recommendation that ultimately the, like, why wouldn't it follow the process the same way that, because I see where you're coming from. I'm just offering a suggestion. Could it be then, just like where it says, "At least three of these appointments made upon the recommendation of an entity that represents business interests?" So obviously, the official act is us raising our hand based on the recommendation. But just for consistency's sake, could we follow that same process?
Yeah, I think the action would be, at the point in November 24th, when you forward this on to the newly, the newly formed Transit Authority, that that action would be, as the city of Charlotte governing body appoints the following individuals. And there would be twelve of those people, three of which would have been the recommendation of the chamber, two, if this passed, would be the recommendation of the mayor, and the remainder would be the recommendation of the council.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been a lot going on. So for the record, I don't support it at all. I'm a no, a big no. But I want to know, from all the information that I'm hearing from people reaching out to me. And I'll be advocating for no in November as well. But, so the Pave Act shows that you get two appointments? Okay, I'm asking, because I'm.
Yes, I think, and correct me, City Attorney, twenty-seven positions had to be appointed, and we have twelve. And if we don't appoint our twelve, they still going to set up an authority.
Dr. Watlington is researching it for me since I just got out.
They still will set up an authority.
Okay, all right, got that. No problem. And so for you, Ms. Maline, I see your name is number one on the list. I love you, and I think you're amazing and all of that, but this is a red flag for me.
Are you asking me to speak to it, or are you?
No, I'm just making a statement. I'm just making a statement. For me, it's a red flag. Some people have some concerns about that, and I would be less than the council representative for the people if I didn't ask. And so with that being said, they've said, where's my other question at? Are you going to recuse yourself from the list, or are you going to move forward trying to be appointed?
Oh, okay.
That's a question for you.
Oh, okay. So first, I'd like to speak to why I'm on the list. I think that makes the most sense. I'm currently the Vice Chair of Transportation Planning and Development for the city of Charlotte. And I have a few years of knowledge base that can be absolutely beneficial to this body. That, I mean, I, you know, with the, I have a day job, so they're not even paying money to do this. This is literally me on my own accord saying, I have four years of knowledge base where I've actually contributed to this conversation in a leadership role, and I'm willing to offer my time to translate on this body so that there could be continuity in that knowledge base. I could retire it and go home and spend that time making good money and spending it with my children, which I'm tempted to do based on how this conversation goes. But I, so I have to recuse myself, I believe, because of what would be considered a conflict. In other words, I can't vote on myself, right? So if I'm one of the people who are selected by this body to move forward, then I would actually have to recuse myself, which actually, I've been weighing since I, you know, because the reason why I'm at the top of the list is because I was the last person to apply. Actually, they're in order by date. So that's why I'm at the top, because I just applied on October 5th. One of the things that is a challenge for me is even in order to contribute my knowledge base because of the overlapping time, I have to give up my right to vote, which is more important in some cases than it is for me to actually be on this body.
Right to vote in November?
Well, no, no. The right to actually vote on the actual candidates once they're decided by the steering committee. So the steering committee is going to bring us some suggestions. And then we have a right to go and see those interviews, if we choose, when they go through the interview process. I can't even be a part of that because potentially I could actually be an interviewee. So not only would I, it's a risk for me, because it actually, I risk losing my voice to offer my information, and I risk being a part of the process. So it's something that, again, I, this isn't about, I don't need any more titles. I got all the titles I can take. I got a lot of education. I think we've done great work over the last two terms. I'm very proud of that work. But I can also contribute to this body because I actually currently sit in a leadership role, and it'll be over on December the 1st. And the Articles of Incorporation for this body won't even happen until weeks later. So there's only about a week overlap from the time that the council will make this decision and the time that I will no longer be a council member. So it's about a week or two left.
All right, so, yeah, so this information is not for me, it's for constituents?
No, I get it. I get it.
Just asking the questions from the constituents. So your accolades, you know, that's fine. You are a phenomenal black woman. I don't deny that. It has nothing to do with the questions that the constituents are asking me to ask, and that's why I'm asking them. I asked one for the mayor, I asked one for you. I can understand why people would say no, though. It's been a lot of chatter this morning. It seems like a lot of confusion at this dais right now. And so I can understand why people are, some people are saying no, and me being one of them.
Well, I don't think they said no because of me. I think they said no because of the process.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. That's not what I said. I said the confusion. I didn't say, saying no because of you, Maline. I'm just saying I'm speaking. And whether people like it or not, I'm going to do that in the way that I want to do it, because this is my voice. I have one of the eleven around this dais until December the 1st, and so I'm going to exercise my right to the full it. So that's all I have.
Well, she can speak, and then I, oh, actually, it'd probably be fitting for me to follow up, so.
Right, I was going to say.
Yes. So I guess, you know, while we were talking about this, I want to make sure that I'm clear. I got the language. I spoke to Dr. Watlington today because there was some confusion in the language of what was actually said. And it said that a council member cannot serve concurrently as they serve on this board. So there is no concurrent service in me assuming this volunteer role after being on council. Like I said, it's one of those things where I may even still walk away from this and take my knowledge base home. It's a possibility. But I do have, in both my public work and my private sector work, something that would be extremely valuable from my years of work on the council and primarily of being Vice Chair of the actual Transportation Board for our city. So, but that is in no way meant to try to, there's always these narratives that just, you know, try to twist things and turn them into things that they're not. This isn't something that you're getting paid for. There's no pay for this. This is literally, I'm saying that, hey, we got this very important board, and I understand it very intimately because I've been an intimate part, a very close part of the conversations, and I'm willing to continue that service. So this is also a decision. It doesn't automatically qualify me. So if that is, you know, the will of this council or even another entity, then I'm willing to, at this point, at this moment, unless that changes, be considered for that. And I'll leave that there.
Thank you.
Your accolades are amazing. Again, the question, was it not a personal attack?
I understand.
But I, the narratives that you said, I would have to come back on you with that, because it's not.
And it's not for you in particular. So don't take this as a shot. This is something that, like you said, we had the conversation in committee this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
And there were other colleagues around the table that had very similar concerns.
Okay.
Like what would it mean, you know, what did the language say? So you're not the only one. I don't want to feel or make you feel as though I'm singling you out. I think it's a valid concern because I am sitting here with you. But the reason why, you know, I could potentially be also a good candidate to participate in this is because I have been sitting here with you, and I have been in leadership around the transportation conversation. And so being willing to translate that into this board, among other leaders, I think could be valuable for the city and the continuity of information in our city and the region. So that's why I put my name in the hat, of course. But again, this is a selection process. I would be, you know, and I could apply for the county and not even have to go through this. And they actually would select after I'm off the council. So it would even be much easier for me to say, hey, county, you know, do this. But I think in all transparency, first, I wanted to make sure that you knew that I was willing to offer myself in this level of continuity, because that's important. In the spirit of transparency, you know, I probably may even consider the county, but I don't know yet. But I think, like I told Dr. Watlington, I think the strongest endorsement, it's like any job that you have, the strongest endorsement are the people that you've actually worked with. So to say that I've stood among other people in the application process, and if I, among these people, earn a right to sit in that seat, and I'm properly qualified, and it's an endorsement of my colleagues, and I think that's more powerful.
Thank you for your full explanation. Thank you.
Ms. Asmira?
Thank you. A couple of questions. So for the working group. As part of your process, will you be making recommendations for the mayor as well as the council appointments? Not for the mayor appointments, just for the council appointments? So you'll be making seven recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. And council can, just like any other board, council doesn't have to follow those recommendations. They can select whoever they like. Okay. So was there any conversation about recommendations for the mayoral spots, two mayoral spots?
No, there was not. I think we was trying to go by what's in the advisory handbook, that the mayor has one-third appointment, and we don't have any feedback with the mayor currently now. So we was trying to model that same behavior.
Okay. And so this question is for Mr. Fox. In, anywhere in the Pave Act, does it say anything about the authority's board and possible compensation? Or does it strictly say it's a volunteer role?
It doesn't say volunteer, and it gives the authority the, I believe, the ability at some point to set compensation if they choose to. There's nothing in the act that currently sets any compensation for any board members.
Okay, so authority could choose to have a compensation?
Yes, they could.
Nothing prevents them from doing so?
Right.
Okay. I think that needs to be a factor, okay, into consideration as we're making appointments. Well, that's all I have. I'm sure I'll have more questions. I'll come back to you, Mr. Attorney. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to wrap? Does anyone else want to have comment? Mr. Mitchell, do you want to wrap this up and, okay?
So mayor and council, here's what I would say. We're on a fast track to participate in, I think, something that's very important for our region and for our community. And so, no, is this a perfect system? It's not. But I do think it's a system that will work, and it has the flexibility of getting a recommendation. But also, it doesn't take away your power to vote for someone you would like to be on the authority. And I say this to say it, so I hope that we can get everyone to agree that we need to move forward with the process and so we can participate and make sure our twelve are part of the authority.
So with that, I do believe that, I wondered if we should have a motion and a vote so that we can move forward, I think, from the discussions that we've had today, so that we codify this process. So.
Mayor, I'd like to enter a motion that we accept the work group process recommendation to make our appointments to the MPTA.
Second.
We have a second for that, and I think we've had a lot of discussion, but if there is anyone that would like to have further discussion? All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. It's just, maybe the news is different in District Four. I don't know. But we have a challenge, guys, with perception and with transparency. And I just think we should have worked overtime and double time to make sure we, that we were moving forward with the transparent process. And like I said earlier, the work group wasn't a council directive that came from the mayor's office. The fact that we're pulling two of our appointees for the mayor's office, the fact that, and with all, you know, with all due respect, the gray area of a council member and the overlapping time member, it's more of the same, and people are tired. So I won't be supporting this process. Yeah, I won't be supporting the process. Again, I don't think that we've listened to the community enough even for the tax. So I won't be supporting the process. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much. Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. I would just like to ask a clarifying question of Councilwoman Johnson. Do you have a recommendation of something other?
Something other than us receiving an email that there was a work group? Yes.
So that's what I'm asking for right now. Do you have a recommendation of a process? Because right now, based on the mandate from the North Carolina General Assembly, we have a very short window that we have to make our appointments. So that's why I'm asking if you have a recommendation of what it would look like so that we can try to figure out how to move forward. Because one of the questions that I ask the interim city attorney is, okay, what if we don't get, because we thought about any potential scenarios, what if we don't get to the point of moving this conversation forward, and we don't get to our seven, twelve, whatever that number is, and we don't get to our appointments? What happens then? That triggers a whole lot of other things based on the fact that North Carolina General Assembly sent back to us something that was very different than what we asked for. So if there's a recommendation of a better way for this to be done, that's what I would love to hear.
Well, I talked about before, I think that there should be a very open process. I've mentioned that before. Vetting the qualified candidates, putting them in categories, and then you could pull from a lottery system, a random drawing.
So that's part of, and I hear the concern as far as why was three people chosen to at least come back and bring a proposal? But the recommend, but the idea of saying, okay, between the fifty-two hours, that gives everyone the opportunity to interview. I wish that there was a space for us to actually come together with, here's our top five criteria that we're looking for. But let's have a real conversation. For our regular meetings and for majority of the meetings, multiple people run anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes late. We all went through, experienced something earlier this year because someone just had a whole lot of time on their hands to actually look into our attendance records to show that there were a number of people that were out. So I, and me and Mayor Lyles go back and forth every day, all day, and at least two, three times on Sunday. So when the idea of, okay, what are we going to do? So we're just making a recommendation, right? Okay, the recommendation is supposed to come back to full council, but there's a reality that we must acknowledge that people don't come to the regular meetings on time. You don't come to the committee meetings, and I'm not saying you individually, collectively. We can't be in on time at the meetings now. So this was in an effort to try to do a good thing. It was not done, in my personal opinion, like a romp, everybody got an opinion. So this was not done with any malice or any disrespect. It was, hey, will a couple of y'all get together and start this process so we can move it along? Sure. I don't have a life, so why not? Let's go ahead and spend a number of hours, but the expectation really was that, okay, we're not, we got to have space for our colleagues, so we're saying we'll commit to these fifty-two hours. I'm going to rephrase that. They going to commit to fifty-two hours. And that way, we got to make sure that everyone's voice is at the table. But if we ask Councilmember Driggs and Councilmember Mitchell, I actually ask that question of, okay, well, how do we actually try to streamline this if we're going to have seventy to a hundred people that apply? What are we looking for? That's the space for full council to come around. And I think that part didn't get expressed. So if there's a different process where you think we can come together within the next seventy-two hours when this application closes on the thirteenth, that's what I would really like to hear. Because, hell, I want to support it. If it's going to, if you ain't like this process, give me another process. Because it can't just be, I don't like this.
Right, but even the three of you. Yeah, and even the three of you, the council wasn't asked. Yeah, and even the three of you, the council wasn't asked, they weren't, we didn't all receive calls if you want to participate on this work group. So again, there's, I talk about the machine and how things are done. And so this, this is why people are frustrated and non-trusting of the process. And when you talk about quality candidates, I hope that there's going to be a fact base or some type of rubrics or some type of scoring before we allow, you know, certain council members to say, these aren't quality, because we know that there can be some level of bias, right?
Yes.
So we need to, yeah, so we want to make a very fact-based decision before we eliminate individuals also, I would think.
So just for clarification, does that mean that what you're saying is you're willing to help create this rubric that you're recommending that we use?
Sure.
Because at the end of the day.
Or you can use, we have a whole HR department. I mean, we can use very objective factors. So what we don't want to see is the same, it just seems pre-designed on who's going to be on the committee.
I definitely don't disagree with you, Councilmember Johnson.
Well, that, in a dream world, just for clarification, in a dream world, we would have had 11 appointments, and that way, everyone would have at least their one to speak to. The four at large, basically, so the two at large were saying, you know what? We gonna get seven, the seven districts. We'll try to reach out and have a conversation with you to see if there's someone in the district that we know, or if we have any inside. But that's what the hope of after this initial, hey, can we move forward? Then we have that conversation. But at the end of the day, the great thing is, the way this system is set up, it takes six votes. So either six are gonna move it forward or not, but we gotta have some type of process before the General Assembly comes in and try to appoint all 11.
We have a motion on the floor.
And you got a second?
And we have a second.
Miss ma'am.
And that's.
And, and I understand there was a dialogue, and I think there was, but I think that right now, we have.
Discussion on the motion?
Discussion on the motion. Discussion.
I know Councilmember Mayfield asked for feedback on the process. I, I don't think we discussed this part, but what I would like the working group to do is help us with, this person meets this criteria, finance, this person meets engineering, this person meets architecture, this person meets public transit experience versus giving us recommendations. You tell us, you're giving us the facts. To Councilmember Johnson's point, what we need is an objective process, fact-based. You give us the facts, let the council make a decision so that there is no preconceived motion of, oh, here's the candidate that is sort of being, oh, this person is going to get appointed. I think what we are looking for is facts. So right now, I have no idea from this, from all of these people, which one meets what, like.
What?
So I think if we can have that instead of recommendations, that would be helpful so that no one will feel like that deck was stacked against them, or any candidate.
So I don't, I didn't, I don't know.
Yeah, so I would like to make a substitute motion that provides the council expertise, fact-based, that'll tell us whether that person meets some, one of these criterias, whether that person meets small business background or public transit experience, and then based on the facts, the council will make the ultimate decision. No recommendations provided, because I think that will take that subjectivity out of this process, to Councilmember Johnson's point.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Any further discussion on the substitute, Mr. Driggs?
I, I understand what the concerns are. What you're suggesting defeats the purpose. We can spend very little time and do a tabulation on a spreadsheet and circulate it to you and say, okay, guys, it's up to you. What's intended here is that thoughtful people, your colleagues, will look and will try to make a preliminary recommendation. You're going to get all the facts, and then you're going to get a little comments from us, just a recommendation. The goal is to try and help people zero in on where the strongest prospects are. It doesn't exclude anything, it doesn't limit your ability, but personally, I don't see why you're better off not hearing the, not getting the benefit of the work, the hours and hours that we're going to spend. You can come to every single interview if you want, 50 hours, book the time. But otherwise, we will have done that, and we will have come back, and there's a diverse group among the three of us, and we will come back and just say, this person, in our mind, is a writer, has the stature, satisfies Mr. Graham's priorities, and so on, and then you can disagree with that. I don't see how you're better off not knowing that.
Yeah, so here is, I, I think that's where the subjectivity is, because we are trying to take the subjectivity out of this process, right? What might be strongest candidate for you may not be strongest candidate for Councilmember Johnson. What might be strongest candidate for Dr. Watlington may not be strongest candidate for me. So we are trying to make this process as transparent, as objective, as possible. So I personally feel if you give us the facts, I believe we are capable of making a decision. We are elected by the people, and I think we should be the ones making the decision. I get it that you're going to give us the recommendations and then we get to decide, but that's, that's already three, that's already stacked against us. And I just feel that's, that's not the process that's fact-based, or that's not objective process.
So no interviews, right? No interviews? How does that work?
So here, I'm gonna break it down, because I'm right, I was just thinking about what Councilmember Johnson raised, and this is something that came to mind, that is.
Are you wanting this to be exactly like just a business advisory committee, where just, we have a lot of applications? That one seems to be a really popular one.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I think she still has the floor, Mr. Peat.
I'm just asking her a question. I'm trying to figure out her substitute motion, as I'm just trying to figure out. Because I think what she's saying is she doesn't want any filter at all. You want all the applications to come straight through.
No, this is what I'm asking. I would like the working group to give us the facts, and then this council will make the decision. So right now, we need the categories. You guys, I mean, interviews, you can continue with it, because the full council can participate. You're not telling us not to participate. So I don't think that process is subjective, because we can all participate. You give us the time and say, here, here are the times, these are the candidates that are coming, you're welcome to come and listen to them, which is fine. What I'm saying, we're not taking that, that step out of the process. All we are saying is do not make recommendations. Let council make their own decisions based on the facts, based on the interviews everyone heard and listened to.
So what is the outcome of the interview process? I'm sorry, I just.
Mr. Driggs, actually, Ms. Ashmira had the floor, Mr. Driggs has the floor, and then you have the floor.
Ms. Watlington?
So, and certain number of people will be involved in the interviews. And what are they going to do? Write down what? This is what they said? We can provide recordings of the interviews and then not, not opine any further. So you can have a package that has all of the data, which is 500 pages, and you can have 50 hours' worth of recordings, each one of you, and then you can decide. I just don't understand why it isn't clear that if 100 people apply for this, there are going to be some people among those applicants who are not going to make it to the final seven. Let's be clear. And that's all I have to say. If that's what you want, it's easier for us, I'm fine.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but I respectfully disagree. I personally think this process needs to be as objective, as fact-based, as transparent as possible, so that council makes a decision without any recommendations. Because I, I just personally think that what might be important to three of you may not be important to the others. They might think that strongest person might meet different criteria from different districts. I, I, so I think this keeps the process fact-based.
Okay, Ms. Watlington?
Thank you. For me, this conversation, thank you, Councilmember Ashmira, for, for putting this on the table. I support your motion, because I think you're exactly right. This, what we've gone through here and what we experienced in the Transportation Committee meeting this morning, to me, is an exact example of some of the things that Councilmember Johnson's talking about. We don't need you to explain to us the process. We understand what your intent is. What we're very clearly telling you is we don't want your recommendation without the facts, or us to make our own recommendation first. So to me, that's very clear. I think regardless of whether we're all in the interviews or not, it makes sense. I mean, sure, you can probably drop that in ChatGPT and say, read these people's applications and slot them in one of these, these categories, right? That can come ahead of the interviews. But I think it is very important that we don't start filtering people out on the front end. I just don't think that is, that is a fair process, and I don't think it's necessary at this point. So I'll be supporting your substitute motion.
So the substitute motion is on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second as well? Dr. Watlington? All in favor, Mr. Graham? You have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I thank you, Madam Mayor. And two things can be true, right? It is, it is, we need a process that filters through the applications. Councilmember Mitchell said earlier today that the committee will divide up the applications by categories. He said that at the Transportation Committee, so we can know which applicant fits which category. That would be a benefit to the council. It also would be a benefit to the council if we give them the authority to interview. And I'm not a member of the working group, but I think this is so important that I'm going to make myself available to attend, if not all, at least 90% of the interviews, because I think Mrs., and the reason why I'm doing that, because I think Ms. Ashmira is right. What may be important to Councilmember Mitchell may not be important to me. And I even, at the committee meeting this morning, laid out what's important to me.
Yeah.
Right? These, these are three questions that needs to be asked to satisfy me appointing someone. So I think we can do that for sure, and I think we can accommodate what Councilmember Ashmira and Watlington are suggesting, and Johnson, that maybe it's not seven recommendations, maybe it's 12, maybe it's 14, right? These are the set of applicants that meets the basic requirements through our interview process, where every council member has the opportunity to attend and ask their particular question, to give the council at least a body of folks to choose from, right? So it may not be seven, maybe 12, maybe 14, maybe 15, and then have the council, as we do through our norm, normal application process, choose from that list. Right? And so I think we can blend, Councilmember Driggs, and Mitchell, Mayfield, we can blend the two a little bit to get to where we want to go. This is really, really important, guys. And the legislation didn't do us any favor, and I said this before, because it imposes, I think, an impossible deadline, that a lot of this got to be done by the end of the year, if it passes. It's just, it's just a lot going on. But we got to do it, right? And I think we have to be very thoughtful about how we do it. We have to be very strategic about how we do it. That's why I think, Councilmember Mitchell, we need to have everybody place their cards on the table, so we can fill in gaps where there exists, and really give all our council members the feeling, more than a feeling, that they are a part of the process, and that we're not hiding anything, or that this thing's already baited. So I would, hopefully, that there's a, a way that we can blend this. And I think the substitute motion may accomplish that, maybe? Mr. Mitchell?
I would hope that the idea around how we use technology, that we're going to have a process that, I think it was all of the people on this list, has, they have the opportunity to be interviewed, if they should come in and talk and discuss it, and that maybe at this place is that, that's something that we actually have, council members have the ability to see it virtually, or sign up for any part of this? Because I know it can be a lot of work to get in and out of every place, but I think that what you're saying is that everyone should have the opportunity to have this discussion, and have it in a way, I believe, that is 20 minutes and five minutes, and then you have fair, fairness among everybody on this set for doing that.
So I have a question.
There's a motion, there's, there's a, a motion on the floor.
There's a substitute motion.
A substitute motion on the floor, and.
And Councilmember Graham made a suggestion, so I wanted to ask a follow-up question for clarification. So Councilmember Graham, I just want to understand, so you would like recommendations from the committee? Is that what you're asking for?
I, I think the committee can give us recommendations. I think we have seven appointments. I think we can go more than seven recommendations, right? And then allow the council to filter through 15, 16, I'm just throwing out a number, right? Based on those interviews, those criterias, and again, if everyone thinks it's really important, that they will lean in and attend the meetings, right? That's, that's the work, right? That's what we all signed up to do, right? That's the work.
Wouldn't that require a friendly amendment, maybe?
That's what I'm thinking. Like, I'm trying to figure out how many.
Help me out.
How many recommendations that you are looking for, Councilmember Graham? Because here, I'm trying to figure out a difference here. So over here, one side, no recommendation. Here, they want to give seven, seven recommendations. I'm trying to figure out what, what is it that you're looking for? Because ultimately, it's going to take the majority to move this forward.
If I can, I don't, I think the substitute will, will need clarification, because I was talking with the clerk, and we're trying to understand what is the, what is accomplished in the substitute. So I think it needs to have some, some meat on it. Is the substitute to adopt the recommendation of the committee but for making recommendations and only providing objective.
That's right.
Criteria on the pool of candidates that are being presented? I, I don't know. You just need to.
Yeah, I think you nailed it. You nailed it. We are okay with what the committee's doing in terms of the interview process. What we would like to do, at least for me, is no recommendations made to the council. Where council will make a decision on who they would like to appoint, based on the facts that's been provided, and the category that each candidate meets.
This is important work for this, this board, because it's, I mean, it's going to set the future of this authority. You might want to then allow the committee to put it in buckets, maybe most qualified, qualified, or least qualified, in terms of categories, but not rankings, and still allow you, as a council, to select from within that, that coupling of the candidates that you want to do. And obviously, that will include how those candidates otherwise qualify, and the areas that they qualify in. You know, whether this is a candidate for law, these are five candidates from law, I don't know. You, you need to figure out that structure.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. So I think that's where we have to define what most qualified means versus least qualified versus in the middle, to make sure that the, a decision is fact-based again, and then it's objective versus we are getting recommendations based on, so there is a lot that need to be worked out still. I, I just feel that. I don't say it to you, I'm good.
Mayor?
Okay. Mr. Driggs?
I just say, you will get all the data. Everybody will have all the data, right? You can read or not read the recommendations. They're not binding.
No.
The idea is simply to provide assistance in reducing a large number, rather than have 11 people look at 100 applications. That's all.
So the application deadline is 10/13, right? That's a week from today.
Yes.
You're asking us to really get down in the weeds and work out some process? Can we defer this vote for another week, and then we work out the bugs and the process, and then we can vote on it next week? We can, I don't know if we leave the substitute motion hanging, or how this works.
I think we have a substitute motion on the floor.
You know we want to be somewhere in the middle, but you're asking for details today that I think we're taking a lot of time.
I think that the attorney was suggesting a process that was not necessarily detailed, it was just defining buckets and whatever. That's, that's what I heard him say.
But if the application process is not even. But if the application process is not even over until next Monday, we can't do anything before then.
Oh, right. That is correct.
That's true.
But I.
A point of clarification, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. It sounded, in my opinion, that you two were attempting to try to come to a consensus. And I think, based on what I heard, and maybe it was interpretive, that you landed somewhere close to the same thing. You said that there was, you know, an ability to bring forward more than just seven, and it not just be solely, you know, a recommendation by the three members of, you know, the board. And you are asking for transparency in, you know, how those, you know, recommendations are being qualified, right? And I agree with Councilmember Graham, I believe both things absolutely can be true at the same time. And I don't think we put a stipulation on that number. There may be, you know, between now and next week, 20 people, 30 people who are qualified. And I think if that means in this 52-hour window, where there are 20-minute increments, where they're attempting to try to be, and then it's over a certain amount of time as well, then any one of us that are interested and available to this process can be a part of, and it's going to be streamed online, so it's going to be available online for the public consumption. Any council member can actually be in the room. All of the names are already online. And I get it, I live in the same world as you guys do, I understand the need for transparency, and we are bleeding when it comes to transparency and operation. And so any opportunity that we can get to allow our trustees to say, hey, we want you to know what's going on. So your point is not lost on me, and I'm struggling with how to make sure that what you're asking, which is absolutely valid in my mind, you know, how do we achieve what you would like to do? And even taking the friendly amendment suggestion from Councilmember Graham, and saying, we could do both, I believe we could do both. And I'd like to even make a friendly ask to you, that you summate that, say, look, there's no amount, right? If at the end of this process, they come up with, based on these qualifications, that there are 30 members, right? That for, and I'm just being hypothetical, but not putting a limit on what that looks like. And we have criterion that we have to pay attention to. So I think you, like I said, make a valid point in suggesting criterion. If they're going to make a suggestion to us, there's no limit on the amount, it's all available to us. Again, it's streamed online, any one of the council members that are, you know, available to go to these meetings can. And then the council can, is that something that sounds correct, Councilmember Mitchell? Help me, so that we can, because in my mind, and maybe I'm hearing it differently, but it sounds like the two of them are almost there.
I, go ahead.
And I'm not sure we're going to solve this around the table tonight, right? And I think Councilmember Johnson makes a good point, that, you know, we got another week. Councilmember Mitchell, I know you put a lot of work into it. And so I'm just asking, maybe that we use this next week to really refine what you hear tonight, and accommodate some of that, so that we can all be on the same footing on next Monday. And I think there's a way for me, you, Dimple, Victoria, to come together and put something together that makes sense for everybody.
Yeah.
And it's not that, and I think fairness to the council, we're just hearing this tonight. And so if we can put some furniture polish on it, to make sure that everyone's comfortable with it, and use this week to kind of talk and kind of, you know, negotiate with one another to a point where we're all satisfied, I think it'll be a couple of days well worth spent.
So we have a.
I just wanted, I was just going to suggest that Councilmember Graham, you read my mind, I really like the idea that Mr. Fox suggested, where we come up with some criteria as most qualified, qualified, least qualified, like buckets. That will help, that would be fact-based, objective, and as transparent as possible, without putting the subjectivity of recommendations into the process. So if we, if the working group can consider that, and bring back, bring back the process next Monday, that would be helpful.
It sounds like there is some appetite for a deferral.
That's what I was going to say, we have two motions.
You have two motions on the floor, you need to withdraw.
So we have to withdraw the motion, withdraw a motion to put something on the floor?
The maker of the motion was Councilmember Ashmira. And Ms. Walton, you agreed to withdraw, and then you want to make a substitute motion to defer.
Yeah, so I will withdraw my motion, substitute motion, and we'll make a motion to defer this to next Monday, where we can finalize the process next Monday, based on feedback from my colleagues.
And that feedback would go to the group that's working on this? Okay, all right, is everybody clear on that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whatever the process is, takes into consideration objectivity, fact-based, as transparent as possible. So we're taking the subjectivity out of this process from the committee.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
A motion?
You had a motion and a second.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, now let's go for a next item, which is the Housing Trust Fund recommendations. Mr. Driggs? Okay, so we, I didn't, I thought I had the Housing Trust Fund to come up next, so. All right, so the.
Yes, then we'll be committing a report out.
Yes. We're going to have committee report out, so let's, we'll start with this. Council committee discussions.
You had two agenda items, you were going to do the Housing Trust Fund, then you go back to the report outs.
That's what I, okay, don't confuse me about it.
Okay, because that was supposed to be part of the.
All right, Housing Trust Fund recommendations. Who's leading that effort? Is it this? Ms. Mayfield?
What, we have Housing Trust Fund?
Ms. Watlington? Ms. Mayfield? Housing Trust Fund recommendations? Well, she just pointed to her vice chair. So y'all, y'all work it out. Maybe y'all are going to be Eagles for the rest of the night. Do we do it now? Yes. Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Housing and Neighborhood Services is speaking. You're supposed to be doing something.
Madam Mayor, am I to understand that we're going to cover the rest of the update later on?
Yes, we are doing that now. Item, the Housing Trust Fund recommendations.
Fantastic, okay. Due to a potential conflict of interest, I'm going to, after request, recuse, recusal from this conversation and the subsequent vote on October 26th.
I'd like to make a motion, we recuse Council, Dr. Watlington, from this conversation.
Second. All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor that should be excu, excuse, accused. So all in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? No one, so we'll let you walk outside. All right, so Ms. Mayfield?
Okay, so I guess I am now. So, thank you, everyone. We are going to try to be very brief, because we want to be respectful of time, so I am turning this right over to our director, Ms. Rebecca Hefner.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Rebecca Hefner, the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Services. I have with me this evening Warren Wooton, Assistant Director for Affordable Housing. And I just want to also acknowledge, in the room, quite a few of our affordable housing development partners who are here tonight. None of this work happens without them. They have been working hard to bring us proposals that are responsive to your investment priorities and your affordable housing funding policy. So I'm glad so many of them are able to join us tonight. If any, if anyone happens to go back and see any of the Housing Safety and Community Committee meeting, you will find that it is entirely possible for me to talk at double speed. I went through this very quickly in committee, and I'll try to move just as quickly, but maybe not talk quite so fast. So tonight, we're going to review the staff recommendations for affordable housing development support requests that were received in response to the most recent Housing Trust Fund request for proposals. This is the second funding cycle, following the expansion of the housing bond and city councils' adoption of the affordable housing funding policy. So previously, in April, we brought forward to you the first round of recommendations. In this round, you received a total of eight proposals, totaling just under $20 million in investment asks. There are proposals in here for multifamily rental development, home ownership, and supportive housing. On last Thursday, on October the 2nd, there was a memo and report in your council packet summarizing the proposals received. And in addition, you will receive the full booklet, so we refer to it as the HTF booklet, but you'll get a spiral-bound booklet with detailed information about every proposal that will come out to you the week before council action. And then the vote is scheduled currently for October 27th. The recommended investments will be on the council business agenda for consideration. As a reminder, in the most recent housing funding policy you adopted, you were really focused not just on creating units and counting units, but on a set of goals for affordable housing. And those goals are economic mobility, neighborhood affordability, and residential stability. So as staff evaluate proposals, and as we work with our development partners to bring forward to you the best proposals, we're really looking through this lens. We want residents to have access to safe, quality, and affordable housing, to have access to diverse housing options across many neighborhoods, and to have access to services that contribute to economic mobility. So we're going to look at this a couple different ways. I know some of you like the visual version, and so this is where you are right now on the housing bond investment goals. So as part of the funding policy, you allocated specific dollar amounts as goals for each investment category. That's represented here across the bottom, rental housing production, homeownership, et cetera. And the dark green within there, it represents what has already been allocated to date. So you'll see that in the first round, you allocated funds across rental housing production, homeownership, and rental housing preservation and anti-displacement. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're activating the rest of the bond as well. But I just want to make a note also, so the winter round, which was the April investments that you all voted on, that's the round that typically tax credit projects are brought forward for consideration, because it's aligned with the state's tax credit schedule. And so within that 13.9 million in rental housing production, there were several tax credit developments. One, you approved two 9% projects, one of them was with home funds, one of them was with Housing Trust Fund, and that did receive tax credits from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, so that's moving forward. And then the 4% deals are in the queue for allocation of 4% bond and tax credits in early 2026. So everything that you approved previously is moving forward. Just a couple of notes about the different ways that staff are working to activate the $100 million housing bond. So in many years past, the Housing Trust Fund, RFP, was the primary way to activate the bond. But with so many different types of investments now that you all are making, there are actually many different ways to activate the bond, depending on the investment category. So that may be the Housing Trust Fund RFP, that may be, we also have a rolling RFP for homeownership, we have different programs, like the House Charlotte Program, the Small Landlord retrofit program, and HVAC pilot, under Housing Rehab and Emergency Repair, for example, you'll see a request for proposal that's coming forward at, also at the October 27th meeting for your consideration. So there are a lot of different components to the bond, and a lot of different ways to activate your investments. So just to put it in context, that the Housing Trust Fund recommendations as part of the RFP are just one piece of the way that we work to activate those investments for you. And within that RFP, as a reminder, the Housing Trust Fund provides gap financing for affordable housing developments. This fund is replenished on a biennial basis via bond referendum. We also include our federal allocations within the Housing Development Fund. In this particular round, we're not recommending any awards with federal funds, it's all Housing Trust Fund bond money, but you have seen those in the past. The proposals also are evaluated for alignment with the, again, the affordable housing funding policy. And within that policy, you all have identified five specific investment priorities. So we actually work with our partners to propose and share in those proposals how they address your priorities. So that's priority populations, specifically home buyers, lower-wage workers, households at risk for displacement, and vulnerable populations. We take a look at location priorities, working with our partners to incentivize locations where investment increases housing choice. We're also looking for strong proposals around resident services. How are we able to link housing and services to really create those stronger outcomes to really meet the affordable housing funding policy goals? We evaluate partnerships and leverage, and then we look for innovation. The schedule, the, just where we are today, we started with the request, the release of the request for proposals in June, the proposal submission deadline was the end of July. We had a brief committee discussion earlier today, and then tonight, we're, of course, talking all together in full council. And then city council approval is scheduled for October 27th. So there's a little bit more time in here than usual. We want to make sure that you all have an opportunity to ask questions and get additional information if needed. But that vote is scheduled currently for October 27th. And just as a reminder, the next RFP cycle, I mean, we just start right up again. So that RFP will be released likely in November or early December, and you'll see those applications next April 2026. And as a reminder, those in that winter round will include the tax credits again. So, the summary of the development proposals that were received, here you can see on the screen, you had eight proposals total, three of those in the rental housing production category, requesting just $9.86 or so million. You had three proposals in the homeownership category, $3.8 million, and two proposals in supportive housing totaling $6.25 million. Overall, you can see by category what type of funding is currently available in the bond. You have committed $31.389 and change to date, leaving $68.6 million available. The total funding request is just under $20 million. And so we don't leave anyone hanging, I'll go straight to the point, which is that tonight's staff are recommending approval of all eight of these proposals. So we're going to start with rental housing production. The rental housing production includes new multifamily, it also includes mixed use and mixed income, missing middle production. Tonight, you're going to see three proposals totaling $9.86 million in investment requests. Two of the developments have actually been previously funded and are seeking additional investment, but I'll share more details about those requests as we go along. The first, the first development is Kendall Crossing. This is a 4% tax credit senior, so age-restricted affordable housing, that's brought forward by the Paces Foundation. This is located in District 3. You may recognize this, it was deferred in the first Housing Trust Fund round in April. One of the things about a highly competitive round, like what you had in April, was that we had an opportunity to really fine-tune some of the proposals, so the ones that were deferred. the ones that were deferred did some work to come back with even stronger proposals. And Kendall Crossing did just that. They brought us back a proposal that's much better aligned with your investment priorities, and so today, staff are recommending this. I'll also note, so this occurred in the last round, but one of the things that your staff does is work very hard to make sure that you're getting the best deal you can. And so the original ask on this one was $6 million, and your team has negotiated the ask down already to just under $5 million. So Kendall Crossing, if you can imagine this, it's near the interchange of Moore's Chapel Road and I-485. So this is an area where you don't have a lot of affordable housing investment. The site has an overall location score of 21.5. It's directly adjacent to a shopping center with a grocery store and a pharmacy. This particular site is not directly adjacent to a bus route. It is in a planned micro-mobility zone, so if that work proceeds, it will be in that zone, but it is not on a bus route. The Paces Foundation, they are a tax credit developer based in Georgia, but they partnered locally with us previously. They developed the Legacy at Carr Heights. That was a partnership with the West Charlotte Land Trust. They are in good standing. One of the things that we do when we receive applications is check with our asset management team and make sure that our partners are in good standing and doing the things that they've committed to. So we're excited to see them proposing another development here in Charlotte. I would say they were very responsive to the feedback as it relates to your investment priorities. So in terms of priority populations, Kendall Crossing is serving seniors. You'll see on here, they're also capping their rents at 70% AMI out of their total 100 proposed units. And then they have come back with a great partnership in resident services that they've proposed. So they're going to be partnering with Roof Above. They reserved 10 units within the community for Roof Above's Link program. And the Link program connects seniors with safe, affordable, and sustainable housing, in particular seniors who rely on disability or social security income. So some of the more vulnerable seniors who are on fixed incomes. And within Kendall Crossing, the resident services will be provided by Roof Above and will be tailored to the needs of seniors, including case management, benefit enrollment, and connection to healthcare and transportation resources. And so I want to say, we've heard from several of you and from community members about some of the long-term affordability in tax credit developments for seniors, so I want to go ahead and address that. NCHFA and the Tax Credit Program, we refer to it as LI-Tech for short, they're specifically designed to manage and moderate rent increases. But that doesn't mean that rents are capped. Housing doesn't have fixed expenses, and so rent goes up. But through the program, the Tax Credit Program and NCHFA, and then through your deed restrictions, the amount that rent increases goes up is managed and moderated each year. What we know is that for particularly vulnerable seniors, especially those on fixed incomes, the best practice and the best strategy is exactly what's been proposed here, to work with programs that help pair rental subsidies with deeply affordable units. And just as a reminder, this is a really important partnership because your housing bond dollars cannot be used for rental subsidies. Affordable housing bond is a capital investment bond, and rental subsidies are not ineligible use. So these types of partnerships are really important. Just a couple of other notes about Kendall Crossing. They're working hard to use efficient building systems that can help reduce utility burdens over time. Some of the things they have planned for the development are a dog park, urban gardens, and then to accommodate some of the resident services and onsite health exam room. All right, so that's Kendall Crossing. The next two rental housing proposals are ones that you have seen before that are coming back in for additional investment. And council, you have been typically very conservative about additional investment, the exception being during the pandemic when you had ARPA dollars that you dedicated to projects that had large and unexpected funding gaps. So I'll walk you through why staff are excited about the continued investment in these two projects. The first is River District. This is proposed by Laurel Street Residential. Of course, you're familiar with the River District, the master-planned community, mixed-use community that's underway by Crescent. So there are nearly 5,000 residences planned out at the River District. The first model homes out there are coming online now. And the River District Apartments is a development that you originally approved in 2021. And it was early. There was nothing out there. It was just a concept. And you funded it early on purpose with the specific goal of ensuring that some of the first housing out in the River District would be affordable housing. And so with this additional support, Laurel Street expects that they would be able to close financing in November and actually start construction in December. So they are just about ready. They have a funding gap now of $900,000. So primarily because a lot has changed since your initial approval in 2021. This project was funded with that ARPA investment in 2023. An additional $2.3 million was deployed to this project and to others to support developments that had funding gaps coming out of the pandemic. And River District has an additional gap now of $900,000. There's two pieces to this gap. $400,000 of that gap is a commitment from LISC that they weren't quite able to meet the full commitment, and then an additional $500,000 overall funding gap. And I just want to note, on all of the slides and in the summary report that you received, where we've indicated investment per unit, that reflects the total investment, so previous investment plus what's currently asked, if applicable. So it does reflect the all-in amount. And in this case, the all-in overall city investment with this addition would be $6.7 million, putting the cost at just over $70,000 per unit. So you'll also note on here, this is not a tax credit development. Being in a brand-new master-planned community, the location is not eligible under the North Carolina guidelines for tax credits. So it does require that higher level of support. We knew that going in. And I'll note also that as part of coming back in for additional funding, staff were able to work with Laurel Street to negotiate an increase in the affordability period. It was originally approved at 30 years, and Laurel Street has committed to a 99-year affordability period, which, as a reminder, is the longest affordability allowed under North Carolina law. Another piece of River District that I think's really important to note is that they have kept their commitment to three-bedroom units. So 16% of the units are three bedrooms, and that's really important to serve families. And it's getting harder and harder. A lot of your new developments proposed have very few, if any, three-bedroom units. So Laurel Street has kept that commitment in here. So staff recommends approval of this to advance the previously funded development, especially being so close to ability to close, and it will ensure affordability out in the River District as originally intended by city The next one, you'll have to cast your mind even further back. Because River District was approved in 2021, Weddington Road Apartments was originally approved in 2016. So another one, many of you have seen this one before. The original ward in 2016 was a little over $3 million, and the Weddington Road Apartments was actually delayed for quite some time by litigation. That litigation was eventually resolved. I'm sure that Dreamkey would be happy to share with you some of the challenges of those years. But I think what's important to note is that that was resolved. They're trying to now advance this development, and it is in, it's consistent with the plans and the place types for this area. So Weddington Road Apartments is a 4% tax credit. And you may recall, this came in in the last round, the first Housing Trust Fund round earlier this year. Staff recommended deferral at that time. It came in at about $4.5 million of an investment ask, which came to $90,000 per unit when you did the all-in math. So we recommended deferral. We asked you for some time to work with the developer on options to lower the cost. So Dreamkey was able to modify some of the financials. They've reduced the current ask to just under $4 million. One way they've done that is also to increase their sponsor loan, which means that they're actually putting more of their own money into the development. And it is now at an ask of $84,000 per unit. So I want to just say, yes, that is expensive. And it would be one of the highest-per-unit investments you've made. But a couple of really important things to note about Weddington Road Apartments. So this is located in District 7. There's no other affordable housing nearby. You'll note in the location summary, the diversity score is 10. That's 10 out of 10, meaning this is going to be some of the only affordable housing anywhere around. So if you're familiar with Weddington Road, right now, this is a vacant, grassy lot. I was able to go by and confirm that Dreamkey is taking good care of it. It is nicely mowed. It looks lovely. So it's across the street from Socrates Academy. It's just about a mile south of the new 485 interchange at Weddington, nearby shopping at Weddington and McKee. There's a YMCA branch there. It's close by to Beatty Park. But $84,000 a unit. This site is not located within a qualified census tract, so when you think about tax credits, a qualified census tract means that it qualifies for a basis boost in tax credits. And Warren was helping me with this earlier and looked it up. If you receive the basis boost, you get 30% higher dollar amounts in tax credits. So without that basis boost, it's a lot more expensive. But one of the challenges that you all have noted in the past with the tax credits is that the way it's designed and the locations that receive that basis boost are often lower-income areas. So it's designed to incentivize putting more affordable housing in areas that already have more affordable housing. And so this is what it costs to develop affordable housing outside of that qualified census tract. I'll also say a couple of things. Dreamkey has been very committed to this development. Originally, it was 72 units. They've brought it back in at 85, so they're putting additional units out there. And you see the unit mix. They have capped the incomes at 60% AMI, and of course, including the 20% at 30% AMI. So this is a deeply affordable development in an area with very little affordable housing. Same as I mentioned with River District, they've kept their commitment to three-bedroom units. So in this case, 19% of their units are three bedrooms. And so, the, sorry, one thing to note, because I know this came up last time, Dreamkey has not completed a new round of community engagement yet. We did extend the deadline for a community engagement meeting. That will be conducted prior to the vote, and we'll provide any substantial feedback to you at that time. But we do recommend, staff recommends approval to advance this previously funded development. You have about $1.4 million, I think it is, already in costs in this for the land acquisition. But Dreamkey has indicated that if we're unable to find a solution here, they're likely to not be able to use this site. That funding would eventually, if the land is sold, come back to the Housing Trust Fund. But this is really for you all to discuss and probably wrestle with a little bit. Dispersion is part of your overall goal for affordable housing, and this is what it costs to do so. All right, I'm going to shift gears. We're going to move into homeownership. And just as a reminder, the $25 million overall committed to homeownership in the current Housing Trust Fund bond. We have three proposals for you tonight. The first, again, is one you've seen before. So Avalina at Newell Town Homes. This is a Dreamkey Partners homeownership development. It is part of your Faith in Housing initiative. It's been proposed in partnership with Newell Presbyterian Church on land they own. And this was approved just in the last Housing Trust Fund round in April. They're also seeking additional funds. You approved them at $2.43 million, and they're asking for an additional $702,000. And this is one that arose based on kind of the timing that occurs with the way we bring you Housing Trust Fund recommendations. So when the proposals come in to us, they have been through sketch plan review with planning, but not full planning review. And so in this case, when Dreamkey went through full planning review, they identified some changes that needed to be made in stormwater mitigation and in sidewalk improvements. Those would have a material impact on the cost. Specifically, they needed to shift some of the stormwater mitigation onto the site and would have lost some of the 54 units. So they're requesting an additional $702,000 to keep the original 54 units as designed. And again, this is 54 units at 80% AMI. It's a, all-in, the investment per unit is $58,000, so it's a little bit higher than average, but it's still feasible. You do have capacity in your homeownership investment category for it. And again, this is a Faith in Housing partnership that you all supported, and so staff recommends approval of these additional funds as well. All right, so everything else is net new. So starting with Ellington Town Homes, this is another Dreamkey Partners proposal. It's part of a master-planned mixed-income community in Greer Heights that Dreamkey is proposing, actually constructing already some of it on land owned by Mecklenburg County. You may recall from the last round, Wheatley Seniors, which is a senior tax credit that Dreamkey proposed in the last Housing Trust Fund round. You deferred that, and Dreamkey has been working hard to make some changes to that proposal. It's looking like a really strong proposal, and they plan to put it back in for consideration in the next Housing Trust Fund round. But that's also part of this same master plan development. So this is a site located in Greer Heights. So if you think about Greer Heights, it's actually on the backside of Randolph Hill's Apartments. It's just down the street from the CNPD Providence Division at Wendover and Ellington. If you go out there, you'll see they're already moving dirt. So the infrastructure for the whole master-planned community is already underway. They got that started with some city investment, $1.3 million in CDBG that council awarded to Dreamkey as part of the $1.3 million in CDBG that council awarded to Dream Key as part of the FY '25 budget process. So that work is already underway. Again, this is county-owned land. The county is going to convey approximately 3.5 acres in fee simple for these for-sale units. The rental units are intended to be a ground lease. This is 35 total units capped at 70% AMI, 30 years of affordability. One thing you'll note about Ellington is a very strong site score. There's bus access, shopping center, grocery store, credit union, medical facilities, and good access to jobs, a very active neighborhood change score. So think about Greer Heights. Over 80% of the homes there, the single-family homes, are currently renter-occupied. Folks in that community are facing a lot of displacement pressures. Dream Key has been working closely with Crossroads Community Development Corporation to create affordable home ownership opportunities, both scattered within Greer Heights and then also in this neighborhood. If you're looking for a home in Greer Heights now, your median sales price is going to be almost $500,000. So affordable home ownership is in great need there. In addition to the housing, the site plan includes multipurpose green space, an internal trail network, and greenway connection, and a playground. So a part of the broader community out there in that location. All right, your last home ownership proposal is Unity Oaks. This is a proposal from Habitat for Humanity of the Charlotte region. And this is actually a mixed-income development. So 71 total townhomes are proposed. This is also in the Newell area, also District 4, and actually not too far from Avaline at Newell. This is off Greer Road and WT Harris, so across from CPCC's Cato Campus, also very near the Reedy Creek Nature Preserve. One exciting thing about this is it's really bringing together several organizations who are partnering to create affordable housing and to create it sustainably for the long term. So this is Habitat for Humanity, the Marankus Foundation, and True Homes. And Habitat is seeking Housing Trust Fund investment for 31 of the 71 townhomes out in the mixed-income development. One of the things you'll note about the Habitat model is they are able to serve down to 60% AMI through their program. So it's a little bit divided up between 60%, 70%, and 80%. And then, of course, there's 40 market-rate units. But just note that all of the calculations here are only based on the affordable units. The Marankus Foundation purchased this land as part of their land bank efforts, and they'll donate it to Habitat upon land development approval. And then, in addition to the purchase and donation of the land, they're really designing this partnership in a way that ensures long-term affordability. So it's not often that you see 99 years of affordability on a home ownership development. And so this is how they've proposed for that to work. 99-year restriction that these would be owner-occupied and that subsequent buyers would be at or below 80% AMI. Habitat maintains a right of first purchase for 45 years, and they've designed the deed restrictions so that it includes a shared appreciation clause. So the longer a homeowner stays there, the more shared equity they will be able to generate from the future sale. And I want to just note one other thing about Habitat. You know, you're familiar with their model and the work that they do to get residents ready for home ownership. But they've really been working recently to prioritize public sector employees. And they have a program called Money Matters. That's a financial literacy course that they've been offering to employees, specifically at the Charlotte Douglas Airport and Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. So just one other way that Habitat is working to support and achieve your housing priorities. All right, shifting gears. We're going to talk about two proposals for supportive housing and shelter capacity. This category, as a reminder, includes both single-use and scattered-site permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, and emergency shelter capacity. You have $9 million allocated in your bond for this category. You have not received any proposals or made any investments yet in this category. Tonight, I'll share with you two proposals that have come in seeking a total of $6.25 million in investment. The first proposal is the Dream Center Campus. This is transitional housing. It's been proposed by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Dream Center, which is a nonprofit. This is located in District 2. You can see in this rendering, the Dream Center actually is a multi-phase development on a 13-acre campus. Their plan is to create 32 transitional homes. So we have to do a little bit of math here. So each of those homes has six bedrooms and six bathrooms, so individual units, creating a total of 192 rooms. So that's the whole plan. This proposal is just for Phase 1. Talk a little bit about that. But the development is a partnership between, again, the Dream Center, which is a nonprofit, and True Homes, who's their development partner. This is a site located off of Freedom Drive, just north of the intersection of Toddville and Freedom. There's, it's surrounded primarily by single-family neighborhoods, but also there are several churches nearby. This proposal is, again, for Phase 1, and that includes eight units. So again, it's not as easy to do all of the math and investment per unit, but here, we're referencing it as unit or room, because there are 48 total rooms in these eight homes. In addition to the housing units, and you can see some of it here, the campus is intended to include a 20,000-square-foot clubhouse with a variety of services for the residents. In addition, some of the future phases, I think there's a three-year plan for this, and future phases include a playground, recreational facilities, and additional open green space. So one of the ways that this really meets your investment priorities is serving priority populations. So again, this is 48 rooms, but it's transitional housing that's dedicated to individuals and families experiencing homelessness. And that includes chronically homeless, unaccompanied young adults, displaced families, and individuals in reentry. And one of the strengths of this proposal is the resident services and the partnerships that they have formed. So they're intending to provide wraparound services, including mental health and addiction recovery. But there's also going to be a teaching kitchen, gardens and farms, and a woodworking area. The goal is to teach a variety of job and life skills. They're partnering with Charlotte Works to provide workforce development opportunities. They have some specific employment partners, including Noble Food &amp; Pursuit, Precision Plumbing, and Interstate Electric. And they're also proposing daycare services onsite and telehealth services that will be available onsite through a partnership with Atrium Health. And so the other component of this is that True Homes, through their, is proposing to build these homes at cost. So just another way to keep this affordable. And so this is another one where the community engagement deadline has been extended. So we'll provide any substantial feedback that we get prior, again, to your vote on October 27th. And this is the last one I'll share. So we're homestretch here. The last proposal here is the Mecklenburg County Hotel Conversion. This is intended to be non-congregate shelter, and Mecklenburg County has submitted this as a partnership opportunity to the city. So a couple of things to note. You all and the community have been talking about this, actually, for a couple of years. Originally, the Mecklenburg County Continuum of Care identified an urgent need for non-congregate shelter. Then they worked together to develop this conceptual plan for property acquisition and shelter operations. In 2024, this conceptual idea came forward to the Housing Safety and Community Committee. At that time, the committee reviewed the concept and asked for staff to come back when there was a more tangible plan for both the site and the shelter operations. And there is that now. I would also note that in May of this year, so a couple of months ago, Sean Heath provided an update to Housing Safety and Community Committee on this concept. At that time, committee expressed support for a project funding request to be presented to full council once a specific site was identified and a more specific cost was determined. So that time is now. And the need really continues to be urgent. And the number of people, so Mecklenburg County has what they call a "one number." So the number of people who are engaged in the homelessness system is currently at 2,586. So, and it's on the rise. This continues to be in urgent need. And when this was shared with you in May, there were a couple of key aspects. One, that there would be a city-county collaboration to fund the acquisition and renovation of an existing building. Two, the private sector has committed to fund the first three years of operating costs for the shelter itself. And three, a qualified and experienced service provider would be selected through a national search to operate the shelter. And so this is the proposal that is now before you. Mecklenburg County identified a site. They have negotiated a purchase-sale agreement, and they're currently in the due diligence phase. This is located off of Banner Elk Drive, near Beatty's Ford and Sunset. The ask here is for $4.25 million, which is half of the capital cost. So the total project cost is estimated at $8.5 million. $5.5 million of that is for acquisition, and $3 million is for rehabilitation. And we did have a question about this earlier in committee, so I want to share a couple of the things that are included in that renovation budget. So this is a hotel with 62 rooms. And again, just to clarify, again, the language is a little bit confusing when it comes to shelter and transitional housing. This is 62 rooms, and it's non-congregate shelter, meaning it's serving residents in those individual rooms. And also offers an opportunity for families to stay together within the shelter. But the renovation budget includes items such as additional costs for safety and security, additional lighting, the renovation, in this case, construction of some of the communal spaces, like kitchen and a cafeteria, rooms for counseling, rooms for onsite healthcare, space for staff, some of the exterior improvements, cameras, lighting, and access to the site. So it's, there is quite a bit involved in that renovation scope. So again, Mecklenburg County would maintain ownership of the building. They would assume the responsibility for ongoing property maintenance. The plan here is a 62-room, non-congregate shelter. And the key piece of this is that it is onsite access to health and mental health services, especially for individuals with severe and persistent mental illness. And so this concept is directly connected to the conversations that you all have been having about public safety and quality of life. One of the important things about this proposal, and what we think of as mission-critical, one of the reasons that staff supports this, is that some of the shelter capacity would be reserved for direct referrals from the city and county's street outreach partners. And so we're often working through our street outreach partners with unhoused individuals who are not always willing to go to a shelter. But one of the things that we know from talking with them is that one of the primary factors that they note is that they would be more likely to go to shelter services if it were in a non-congregate setting. So we think this is a proposal that meets quite a few of those needs. I will note that the private fundraising for the shelter operations is underway. An RFI was put out earlier this year just to see, would there be capacity from partners, experienced and qualified partners, to do this? Would there be interest? And two responses were received. So the next step would be to solicit for a provider through a full request for proposal. So that's eight proposals. It did take a while, but I'm going to just say it was a lot quicker than the first round. We had a lot more proposals than that last time. So again, you know, two things. One is that it's not the tax credit round, so there are fewer proposals typically in this round. But also, there's a lot of uncertainty, and there's uncertainty in the housing market. Our partners are facing uncertainty. We're facing uncertainty, so it makes sense that there would be a smaller number of proposals. In summary, again, you have three proposals in for rental housing production, three proposals in for home ownership, and two for supportive housing and shelter capacity. You can see here the cost per unit comparing all of those proposals. Just as a reminder, when you think about the AMI breakdown and the rent and sales price ranges, we want to make sure that you can see what those actual rent ranges would be. Again, very difficult to find housing at these rates throughout Charlotte. And just a note here, again, three of these are coming back in for additional support. So that 226 of the units here are representing developments that you've funded previously. So just to take a look at where you are with your Housing Trust Fund balance, again, after the earlier round of investments, you have about $68.6 million out of the $100 million bond remaining with these eight developments totaling just under $20 million. If these were approved, your Housing Trust Fund ending balance would be about $48.6 million. So thinking about where we are in the bond cycle, that's about half the bond remaining at about the midway point. This is just another way of looking at it by investment category. And so one thing to think about is if these recommendations were approved, what would your next round look like? So it's important to take a look there. And in rental housing, you would have a little over $11 million remaining, which is close to the amount that you recommended for approval last time. You would have a little over $14 million in home ownership, $3.5 million in rental housing preservation, $2.75 in supportive housing and shelter capacity. And then in the other categories, looking across housing rehabilitation and emergency repair, site acquisition, and the Innovation Fund, you're looking at $16.8 million remaining, again, if these recommendations were to be approved. And as a reminder, when we're talking about the Housing Development Fund, following council approval, there's also financial closings, design and permitting. So many of the developments can take quite some time after council approval to actually come online. So just that reminder. And that is your full presentation for tonight. And I would be happy to answer questions and also have Warren. and also have Warren here to help me with some of the more details that you may be interested to know.
Thank you, Rebecca and Madam Mayor. So, unfortunately for our committee, because of the conversations that we had today, we only had about 10 minutes to actually go through. So, this is the first time that even the committee members are seeing the full presentation. But I would start off with a good bit of the conversation. If we can go back on the slides, the county hotel conversion piece, stop there, thank you, is a concern. We had a couple of more questions. One, let's just, one, we love the idea of partnering with the county. The idea of cost per bed at $137,097, or the breakdown of the investment per bed of $68,548 for a space that's already a hotel, and we didn't get, in committee, we didn't have the details of, okay, this is including security, lighting, communal space. There was also a question regarding us splitting this cost down the middle as far as also what of our partners or in the corporate community are contributing to this. That was a question. A question I have, as previously, in this market, as we move forward, when we come to multifamily, and then we can go back towards the end where we had the breakdown that we just reviewed. So, go one more. Go back one. Thanks. Okay, right there. So, we, in committee, didn't even have a chance to go through all of this. But let's just look at the reality. Right now, I have seniors at Rodden Square Apartments. Those apartments are apartments that we help fund. It is a senior community. The federal government, because those are Lytec deals, North Carolina Finance Housing Agency has an escalation clause in their paperwork. The federal government says 30% AMI, you can earn up to $26,000. I have a senior who brings home $987 a month. You're not even bringing home $12,000 a year. Your 30% should be $291. Her rent has gone up to $475, plus the out-of-state company, because it's some developer out of South Carolina that owns this building. You've now added a fee for processing. So, that's an additional $7.95. You bring home $987. So, if we're going to sit up here and tell the community 30% of AMI, but if what you're doing is the national numbers of up to 26, but we have residents who are not receiving additional subsidies, who are living only on the income that they bring in, and if their 30% is not what their rent is based on, because if we truly built diverse price point housing, then there will be a balance of 30, 50, 80, up to market rate, there's a problem. Because in a very short period of time, we are going to have a number of elders who are about to be homeless in our community because of our pricing model, mainly because of the limitations that we have in our pricing model based on Lytec and others. Now, we have some proposals in here where they're coming back for additional funds, and I do want my fellow members of committee to be able to share their concerns regarding coming back, because we've already given money. And in one or two cases, we may have already given money twice, and now here's the third time. For me, of course, I'm going to say, yay, I'm finally happy the River District, it's finally happened. We put a lot of work into that on the front end. I'm going to have to check with the attorney's office, because there was supposed to be a for-sale component at work at diverse price point as well, and it looks like what's coming out there right now is starting like 500, 600, 700 and up. Yet, the challenges that came up is how can we do something different? Because 589 seems great, unless you're that elder that's bringing home less than 1,000 a month, and we're taking almost half of your monthly income, which is leaving you very little to eat, which, you know, people like to do on a regular basis, and/or get your medication and/or possibly pay for transportation. So, those are some of the challenges. But I know my colleagues, both Councilmember Johnson as well as Councilmember Ashmira, had concerns regarding the additional funding as well as others. So, I definitely want to give Councilmember Johnson and afterwards, Councilmember Ashmira, a moment to share, because again, this is the first time we got to see the full presentation. But I do, I'm going to backtrack. Thank you, manager. Thank you, manager. Thank you, staff, for bringing it to committee. We have to look at doing something very different than what we've been doing. It creates a lot of challenges, and the people don't, the community doesn't understand that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I mean, she's absolutely right. I mean, we know this SSI amount, I think, is $900 a month. So, yeah, 30% AMI. I don't know if the state will allow us to do something differently, but people are hurting. I mean, I say that. I don't know where people are supposed to live. I say that all of the time. I met someone who was just placed in low-income housing, and he had been on a wait list for 14 years. So, I just don't know what we're going to do if we're not building or really, really increasing our inventory. I appreciate the opportunity to go to Boston, because we learned that Boston had inclusionary zoning of up to 20%. So, imagine if 20% of all of this explosive growth was required to be affordable, we could really put a dent into the deficit. But thank you for the presentation, Rebecca. I wanted to know, who is the provider, or do we know yet, of the Dream Center? The provider that's going to be providing the supportive services? Has that provider been identified?
Yes. So, that is a development in partnership with Noble Food and Pursuit. They'll be providing the Noble Food and Pursuit. It's Jim Noble's nonprofit arm.
The restaurateur. Yeah.
What are they doing?
He's providing.
If I might add?
Yep, please.
The Dream Center is itself its own 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, who does have staff that is currently providing homeless services and case management to the population.
I'm sorry.
So, they will be providing some of their own services.
So, the Dream Center is a 501(c)(3), is that what you said?
Correct. And they've been operating for a number of years here in Charlotte. They actually used to, you know, be the arms behind King's Kitchen, so the staff that were working there, that was part of Dream Center's operation. They do feeding programs and case management for currently homeless individuals.
And they're currently operating in community space in the Thomas Burrow Hoskins neighborhood. So, this proposal provides both the transitional housing, but also the dedicated space for those resident services.
Hoskins Park Ministries? Are they Dina?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, and then you mentioned Dream Key and a transitional housing project. Is that, what project was that? I thought there was another.
The Dream Center is the Transitional Housing Development, and that is, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Dream Center is the nonprofit.
Okay.
And they're also partnering out there with True Homes. But that's separate and distinct from the other proposals that have come in from Dream Key Partners. Dream Key Partners is the developer of Weddington Road Apartments, Ellington Townhomes, and Avaline at Newell. I think, did I get all the Dream Key developments?
Okay. It was Mecklenburg County that's going to be looking for a provider?
Yes. So, the non-congregate shelter, and again, there's a commitment from the private sector to fund the first three years of shelter operations, which are estimated to be between $9 and $10 million. So, that private sector fundraising is currently underway. When Mecklenburg County is able to acquire and renovate the building, that they will have a time estimate for when the shelter could become operational, and an RFP will be put out at that time. Previously, a request for information was sent out to solicit both interest and make sure that the budget they had identified was appropriate.
Okay. And we talked earlier about the cost, the total cost for the shelter. You said eight?
Yes. So, 8.5 million is the total capital cost. That's $5.5 million acquisition cost for the building and the site, and then a $3 million renovation budget to convert the currently 62-room hotel into non-congregate shelter, including the upgrades to the rooms and then all of the other components to operate a shelter.
Okay. And of that 8.5 million, the city is going to pay for?
The county has requested 4.25 million, which is half of the capital cost.
And then you meant, I heard United Way earlier. Is United Way putting up any of the upfront capital?
So, this was originally proposed as part of the Home for All Initiative, and United Way was leading the private sector fundraising.
Oh, so this is the Home for All project?
Initially, it was a part of that conversation, and that's why United Way has taken the lead to date on the private sector fundraising. But this is a Mecklenburg County proposal.
I appreciate the homeownership, as I said, in District 4. I wanted to ask you, you said that Greer Heights, the average price is $500,000.
So, the median sales price in that area is nearly $500,000 right now.
Now, are those for new homes, or has the market increased for existing homes to that point?
That's the median price for all sales.
So, let me ask you, do we have programs? Because we know $500,000 is gentrifying the neighborhood. Do we have anti-displacement dollars? Because that's what's happening when the taxes are increasing for those folks who've been there a long time. What resources or what tools do we have from our toolbox, Mr. Jones, for residents in Greer Heights and other neighborhoods like this?
I'm sorry, three things are going at one time. What was the question?
So, this is a great presentation for affordable housing, but what's happening, folks are being displaced because of, you know, gentrification. So, what, specifically, she said Greer Heights was $500,000. What tools do we have for residents who would be struggling because of the tax increase?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. So, many things that the city has are related to what the city can do, and which is permissible by state law. So, there are senior and disabled tax relief programs. There are some pilots that we've done over the past few years, like the Homes program. But we can give you a list of what we have been doing and what's available based on what the state allows.
Okay. And I know it's off-subject today, but when you say Greer Heights, $500,000, you know, folks are hurting. So, not just for me, if we make sure the residents know what services are available, because again, we know that we have people, fixed incomes, individuals who are not earning a lot of money, so minimum wage is still 725, and we just need to know what resources are available.
In that vein, Councilmember Johnson, I would just highlight that the Mecklenburg County Homes Program is open. That provides property tax relief to current homeowners. And then, we're also excited about things like the new ADU program that offers financing for homeowners to build ADUs, which is an interesting opportunity for existing homeowners to be able to actually get additional income if they have space available. So, there are a lot of things actually that are built into your housing bond that are anti-displacement initiatives. It's just that when we bring forward the proposals from the RFP, it's typically new construction or rental preservation.
So, we always talk about we can't build our way out of the housing crisis, but if we continue to do what we're doing, we're just, we're never going to get out of it. I don't know where people are supposed to live, and I say that all the time. You know, like, we know, and I talked to Councilmember Graham about this the other night. I mean, we know that there's a population of folks that live in motels and hotels, and now those are being developed. So, is there an overlay where we're going to protect people? I mean, I heard you say the 2586 individuals who are homeless, but that's not counting the ones who are living in their cars. I mean, it's a problem. So, yeah, I think we should, if we can, we really need to talk about, and we do, but the anti-displacement. If Greer Heights is $500,000, and we know that, what are we doing? Thank you.
So, as, again, we ran out of time, so personally, from the committee, conversations and discussions, of which we definitely want to hear from Councilmember Ashmira, I personally have concerns about us, okay, we're just going to present this committee without, a lot of this conversation would have been able to be held in committee. And just for full transparency, the idea of re-concentrated poverty is something that I never wanted. I never want us to see a development that just has 30 in it, or even 30 and 50. We need the diversity, because also that's going to make it a much more sustainable. But when we're talking about potential good partners, and when we're looking at a business that has created havoc in parts of our community, a business that has targeted specifically African-American businesses, and yes, I'm talking about Noble, on Freedom Drive, where when we did development and we identified our corridors of opportunity, the only African-American owned business that was actually left and able to maintain on the Freedom Drive corridor when all of that development happened, was run out because of this one businessman, even though city wrote a contract that clearly identified some language. And now, we fast forward a few years, and you get to present something that is ultimately, at the end of the day, is going to benefit you and your family. It's a business deal. But the most vulnerable are the people who will be living in this space. And if I'm already saying, we're having challenges where we have elders and we have others in our community who honestly are in fear, and don't share everything that's going on in their living conditions because of fear of truly being homeless. If we have multiple news articles, multiple complaints, and we know that this is a challenge, and we're comfortable then coming back and say, oh, but we're going to fund you to do this and have the most vulnerable be dependent on you, we're failing. Councilmember Ashmira had something.
Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, a lot has been said about some of the conversations we had at the committee level. Rebecca gave an overview at the beginning of the committee meeting about home program. We are in unprecedented times with government shutdown and some of our federal funding challenges. Our resources are limited. You need to be very thoughtful about how we allocate our additional Housing Trust resources. Because Councilmember Johnson is right, where are we going to keep people that need affordable housing if we start paying $70,000, $80,000 per unit? We need to be very careful about spending $70,000, $80,000 per unit when we build affordable housing. That means we are going to have less to build more affordable housing. Some of these proposals that I just see is 70,000 plus, 80,000 plus per unit. Some of these proposals that I just see is 70,000 plus, 80,000 plus per unit. And, and the proposal that Councilmember Mayfield raised, where you get for $60,000, 60, sorry, $68,548, you get one bed. I mean, it's just, I, you know, we, we need to understand that when we are out on, in the communities, people often ask about, where, where are this, all this affordable housing? Where, I don't see anything. I'm applying, I'm not able to get any housing. Because if we build more and more and housing prices per unit continues to rise, that means we are delivering less. That means we are, we are helping less families. That means our dollar doesn't stretch as far. So we need to go back and start having some really tough conversations with some of these proposals. I appreciate the work of our affordable housing developers, because they have to work with limited amount of resources that they have. But at the same time, we are getting questions from residents where there is very limited amount of affordable housing, and we need to address that. So I, when I see a proposal where it's 70, $80,000 per unit, and they have come to us not once, but twice, or maybe three times, that is a concern. And I think at some point, staff, you need to draw a hard line. We cannot go back to council. We approved once or twice. This cost per unit is way too high. And at the end of the day, we are evaluated, our performance is evaluated on number of units, number of families that we are able to support, a number of children that we are able to support. So the lesser families that we support, lesser children that we support, we have nothing to show for. I was, a few weeks ago, I was on a campaign trail, and there, I talked to a single mom, her two children that go to CMS. She shared her experience. She had applied to eight different housing, and she hasn't been able to get any housing opportunity. They are living in a motel with two children, going to CMS, no stability whatsoever when it comes to housing. So if we continue to pay so much more per unit, we, we are going to fail some of these residents that depend on us to produce more, produce more housing. It breaks my heart when I see young children that we are not able to support, like their families we are not able to support. It, it's just, it's, it's heartbreaking, you know, when you see children that are just living in cars.
And it's happening everywhere. And then when people are getting, I'm sorry, when they're getting evicted, we're harming them, because they're in places they can't afford.
I just wanted to follow through on one question. So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So on Dream Center Campus, is, which nonprofit you mentioned? That's?
It's the Charlotte Mecklenburg Dream Center.
So that's Jim Noble? Is that the one?
No, that's a separate nonprofit.
So which, which nonprofit was the one that Councilmember May?
So Dream, Dream Center Campus, and, and Warren, feel free, feel free to, to answer again for me here.
So Jim Nobles was one of the founding influences behind the Dream Center. He, he's not the executive director, he's not on staff there, he's just a supporter of that organization. It's run by an executive director who has a staff that works with his population.
And, and Noble Food and Pursuit, along with Precision Plumbing and Interstate Electric, are some of the employment partners that are part of the campus.
Okay, so on slide number 21, you talked about United Way. To answer Councilmember Johnson's question, that they were leading private sector fundraising, how much did they raise?
So there, there are not commitments to date. They've been working closely with the Charlotte Executive Leadership Council and the Foundation for the Carolinas. And I think there's a little bit of, of, you know, the private sector is interested to see, will there be a hotel? How, how, how will these conversations go with the county acquisition before firm commitments are made? But private sector partners haven't indicated a interest in a willingness to partner for those first three years of shelter operations.
Okay, I'm sorry. So there is no private sector dollars raised as of right now?
Not, no commitments yet to date.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to look at Sean to just confirm.
I think the way you characterize it is accurate, but we were clear in May that that would be a necessary agreement to unlock any city funding that is authorized by us.
Well, that's always the case. But I, I mean, yeah, that, we always are asked to put the seed money, which is fine, but if you're not getting any private sector commitment, I mean, you're paying $68,000 per bed. And you see some of these other housing, even, even housing opportunities that are 40,000, 50,000. I, it just, it's difficult for me to make sense of 68,000 per bed when there is no private sector match.
So one, one thing I just want to put in context is that one, one of the things we do is, you know, line, line, line all of the proposals up together, and they're not necessarily apples-to-apples comparisons, right? There, there are, you know, you, you invest as a council in a wide range of housing types across the entire spectrum, from supporting the unhoused, anti-displacement, all the way through to homeownership. And all of those activities cost different amounts, and they cost different amounts in different places. And so even, even 84,000 is not outside of the realm of what you might invest in, say, down payment assistance or other types of programs. And then when, when you look at things like supportive housing and, and shelter, oftentimes those activities can be more expensive. So I, I, I acknowledge the, certainly, the, the concern that you're raising. I just want to note that they're not always apples-to-apples comparison. Some of the projects might be more deeply affordable than others. So one of the things that staff does in evaluation is look at, you know, the, the investment per unit per year, along with the affordability, to, to determine if it's kind of within the, within the parameters and within the range of feasibility, and also look at those, you know, evaluated against what's available in, in each category.
So Rebecca, I understand it's not an apple-to-apple comparison, because lot depends on the location, other financing, whether that's light tech, whether that's other money that, when it's involved. Like when it's faith in housing, we know that faith communities putting up land. So that's why the cost per unit would go down. I, I get all that. So I, you know, we used to look at leverage. How much are we leveraging other financing? I, I don't see that on here. Like, for this hotel conversion, it's great, because we need to expand the capacity. But what is the other source, other than the county? Because I remember when we did, in middle of the pandemic, when we had a deal with Roof Above, the per bed cost was lot, lot lower than this, because there were other sources that were involved. So we need to look at it that way as well, and we need to look at how are we leveraging other sources?
And the, and the leverage is not on the slides today, but it is evaluated, and it's included in your more detailed packet in, in that HDF booklet. So we'll make sure that you get all of that.
So the manager would like to comment on this, and then?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And I'll try to do my best explanation of this city-county opportunity. So as you know, your $100 million in HDF, you set aside about $9 million for supportive housing and shelter capacity. So whatever your projects are, there's a, there's an opportunity of $9 million for these types of projects. What Rebecca said is true, based on the type of service level, it's difficult to take one look at a cost per unit. What's interesting about this one, if we go back to Home for All, which had some bold concepts about homelessness in 2025, and we're almost in 2026, okay? So this started back during the pandemic. You achieved one of the goals by getting your housing trust fund up to $100 million. This non-congregate shelter is very different, and Sean, if I'm way off, let me know, okay? It, it's not designed to just have someone live there forever. This is designed so that it is short-term, giving opportunities for individuals to have opportunities, maybe one, at one point, have homeownership, home ownership. When this began, the concept was $7 million from the city, $7 million from the county, $9 million from the private sector. So the county went out and acquired a piece of property, and it appears that this public sector contribution, instead of being 14 million, will be 8.5. The private sector, in their fundraising, needed to see something before they would really go deeply into this. And again, this something is not exactly what we have seen here in Charlotte as it relates to a non-congregate shelter. Again, these are going to be, when I started doing this decades ago, it was SRO, single-room occupancy, but let's not call it that either, because the concept is people will be there over a shorter period of time to find other avenues for getting to a better condition as it relates to housing. So that, was I close, Sean?
So I have a question. So you said 14 million?
Can, I know Mr. Graham was next.
We, what is 14 million? I, I just want to make sure I understood.
Yes, so again, years ago, this concept, before anybody located a piece of property or a hotel to have a conversion, the concept was a belief that this may be $14 million to find it, purchase it, renovate it. But fortunately, it's a lot less, because the county has found the property, purchased the property, and they upfit with everything that Rebecca said earlier. Instead of being $14 million, it appears to be 8.5 million. When we started off, again, in this journey, the three-year carry from the private sector was 9 million. So the $9 million investment from the private sector, and the $14 million investment from the public sector, now the public sector's investment is closer to 8.5 million.
So what's the private sector's investment?
So again, as we started off, and it'll be whatever it takes to carry this for three years, and the estimate early on was, was 9 million. So I don't know what it will be, but the commitment is to fund the operations for those first three years.
I'm sorry, so first three years of operations, that, that's the county is funding?
That would be the private sector.
Private sector will fund the operations for first three years?
Absolutely.
So once we put in 4.2, and the other half is paid by the county, the operations will be paid by the private sector. Do we know what that amount is? Yeah, I get it, for three years. But what, what is that amount for the three years?
We don't know what the amount is for the three years. What was estimated, this private sector's investment would be that $9 million.
Right, but we don't know how, how much the operations would cost for the first three years?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it would be 12. I don't know if it would be six, but that's the commitment from the private sector.
One, one, one thing I'll offer is that the reason that a RFI was published earlier this year was to assess the, to, to, to confirm the estimates that were made, and based on the responses to the RFI, that, that 9 million could potentially cover three years of operating. So we don't have an exact number, but the, our partners have been, have been thoughtful about making sure along the way that the original estimates are reasonable.
All right, Ms. Ashmira, done? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I told Kim this was going to be a short meeting, and we're, we're still here. So I want to thank the committee and the staff for, for bringing this to us. I think affordable housing continues to be our top priority, and the way the committee initially set this up with the $100 million, talking about production, ownership, and supportive housing was the right thing to do. I think Rebecca took the, the words right out of my mouth, which is, this is, all things are different, right? Different location, different housing spec, different costs. I support the River District project that's up there, but it's the River District, so it's going to cost more, I would suspect. But I really want to draw our attention to the supportive housing, the shelter capacity. And a lot of this conversation with the Home for All started when we had people living in tents in Uptown Charlotte. Rat-infested tents in Uptown Charlotte. When the city and the county and the private sector came together to produce, to study a Home for All, where we said that we were going to make this our top priority to ensure that people had safe, clean housing who needed in an emergency situation. We are in an emergency situation for our community for this type of housing, which is different from your typical affordable housing, right? It's, it's emergency housing, it's needed housing. When we try to, and I use the word really, really loosely, right? Run people from Beatty's Fort Road, we got to run them to services, we got to run them to housing, we got to run them to resources. Our capacity space throughout the city is limited. This helps with that, and it comes with a cost that I think we got to pay. We got to be respectful of the tax per dollars that we're not overpaying, but it comes with a cost. And so I would hope that we would respect that our corporate community, when Axe has come forward to support us. I mean, years ago, when the mayor asked them to match $50 million, they did. They made a commitment to be a part of the Home for All, and said that they would work with the city and the county. I think they will. And so I think what's before us, and I'll talk specifically to Mac County Hotel, then we'll talk about the other one later, right? Because I, I hear you, right? But this relationship with the county and for housing and wraparound services is something that we've been talking about doing for years. And I think we, we got to go ahead and write the check to support people who are living, literally, living on the street and need someplace temporary to go until we find a permanent solution. And this starts a really new dialogue with the county about how we can work together. And we've been saying that we wanted to do that for years as well. So I think that's a good, really, first step. I, I support this. It's in District Two. The county is going to be the property manager, it's going to be maintained appropriately, and they're going to provide the type of service internally that I think our citizens need and deserve. So I think this, we should do this. The other one is very interesting as well. It's in District Two. I, I asked the question to who was the developer, who's, who's kind of doing the day-to-day operations of this? And so could you answer that question one more time for me?
Hit it, Warren.
So this is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization called the Dream Center.
Okay.
It's run by a professional staff that has case managers, and they're, they're already providing services to homeless men and women in our community. This would become a permanent campus for them, where they'd be able to provide supportive services. where they'd be able to provide supportive services from the site and also the build-out that you saw on the slide.
So that's much...
That's part of that conversation, too. It's a full transparency of we're going to say who it is, and we're also going to say who that founding is and recognize the impact that you have had in community. So it is part of the Noble Foundation.
Point taken.
For the minutes.
Point taken. Putting that aside for a second, not permanently, right? But this is what we need. Because part of it goes directly to the issue that we've been dealing with for the last four or five weeks, which is public safety. We got to have a facility to host and house individuals who need help. And this provides that. Certainly, I'm willing to ask some tougher questions, Councilmember Mayfield. I hear you. But in terms of the transitional housing that is needed in this community, the shelters that's needed in this community, how do we get people off the streets into safe, clean, affordable housing? This is different from affordable housing. This is shelter housing. To increase our capacity, it's needed. It's a public safety initiative. It's a housing initiative. And it's helping people. Councilmember Johnson, when you said sleeping in the cars, some of these people are sleeping in the cars. And we get an opportunity to congregate them in that shelter and process them out to a long-term solution. And if we have to have people transition in a campus environment with wraparound services already there, I think it's the price worth paying. Thank you.
So I wanted to just say that when we talk about this campus site, it's absolutely one of the most things. And I think Ms. Esmer talked about children. And there are ways that we can do this that this community voted for the $100 million. And they've never turned us down in terms of what we are trying to do and accomplish. And I think the campus idea, being able to actually have a safe place to live, have your kids be able to get off of a school bus or whatever in a certain place. We have got to address the issues of homelessness. If we walk out of here tonight and you go a certain distance, people will be sleeping, and they'll be looking for someplace to be. And I think it's time for us to really be serious about what we're doing to help those folks and do other things as well. I mean, we shouldn't be just one thing. We need to be supportive to a number of people that need this kind of assistance. So I think that we were also asked by... Ms. Malina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been a lot said around the dais, and I think there have been some great points. I... The one thing that I've said my entire time serving is that I've always believed that government is an access organization. And we intend to inform outcomes. And I think outcomes are based on a number of different things. If this is temporary shelter opportunity for three years, where we have multiple stakeholders, because we need the whole community, right? My mind says we need the resources of Mecklenburg County because the resources within Mecklenburg County, they have different funding. And they have a different funding mechanism to be able to do more than what we can with, you know, for mental health services, for an example, access to, you know, human services and that type of funding. So I think it's unique to have a conversation where we have now Mecklenburg County at the table. I get hit hard because of, you know, uniquely because of relationships in the private sector. But there is no such thing as affordable anything unless we bring the private sector to the table. They have to be stakeholders in every single conversation that we have. They have to be willing to provide the jobs to the residents that are continuing to come to our cities, our city, our region. They have to, we hope that they... Because they don't have to. We hope that they remain willing to continue to partner with us in this endeavor because it's a problem that we all hold. I mean, crime ends up on all of our doorsteps. So we either get in on the front end or we're on the receiving end of what becomes crime as a result of people in need. So it is all of our challenge. And I am always heartened when I see a diversity of stakeholders as a part of our solutions. And so Mecklenburg County is actually listed as a developer, I think is a unique even listing for Mecklenburg County and our partners. Not... And one of the things that I endeavored to do when I was initially elected was I looked at our budget as opposed to their budget and what they have as far as allocation is concerned. And Mecklenburg County, actually, this is a leap for them because the largest portion of their allocation is for educational purposes. Central Piedmont is one of their largest stakeholders. You know, CMS is one of their largest stakeholders. And then their Health and Human Services. And then they do have economic development money. And they're saying, we want to bring that to bear in addition to this. So like I said, that's one of many. I also want to make sure that, as a single mother, I've been a single mother for quite a few years with two children. And I... That can mean different things for different people. I remember when I first, and this is a personal story, when I first went through the beginning of my story, I went to Mecklenburg County, and I had a bachelor's degree. And I remember checking that I had a bachelor's degree in their application. And I remember being told that, wow, that's not something we see often. You know, as far as people who need resources. And I remember the first time they tried to send me to classes, they sent me to a GED class, and they told me I had to sit there. And I remember thinking, and I told the woman in the class, I went to like three of the classes for services. And I remember the lady telling me, well, this is a part of what we do. And I was like, well, ma'am, I have a bachelor's degree, and I'm a project manager. And, you know, I got all of these things. And there's a point to this. What I'm saying is, is that we... I don't like to make these decisions in a monolith because we meet humans at different intervals of their lives. And some humans need very temporary resources that get them right back on track, something like this. Like a mother who is in a detriment, but maybe she's not, you know, completely low on her resources, may need something temporary so that she can stabilize, right? Or we have humans who are completely homeless. We have families in CMS that have absolutely nowhere to go. That is a completely and totally different signal for help, right? And so I challenge, because I know that we have over 13,000 areas of need. And I know that we don't have enough money. Our need outmatches our money. And so I'm always on the side of where we can help, I think we should. I think we should stretch our dollar as far as our dollar will go. And I think that we should take our dollars to be of assistance. And I think it'll be an incremental help. I don't... We're taking stabs at a really big issue, like a really huge issue. And so I just think that I'm afraid to make someone believe that we're affecting total outcomes with my language, right? When I speak in definition and I say definitively that this can be resolved, we don't have enough money to resolve the issue. And I think making sure that we set that expectation and tell people $100 million is a lot of money, but it is not enough money to even close to resolve the amount of need in our growing region, right? So I just... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, continue.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear in saying that, you know, these are temporary resources. I think, you know, notwithstanding the amounts that may differ based on location and a number of different other things, I like the idea of incremental resources. I like the idea that we're going to meet humans in different places along, you know, and we'll have other opportunities for permanent situations. But I think temporary situations are also important because there are people out there. I can speak from personal experience, right? Who experience difficulties, and they're very resilient. Someone like me, I can't say single mother the same way that someone who don't have the education and experience that I have, right? So I'm not even going to pretend that just because I say that, that I embody their experience. Does that make sense? It means something temporary and different for me as opposed to someone else. So I think that's why I shared that portion of my story, to say, being completely, you know, cognizant of the fact that we're going to meet humans at different places. Sometimes temporary services are very, very necessary. And then maybe getting them from an outcome perspective, right? I think the outcome is, are we intending to see somebody through to where they have a different outcome? Or are we just saying, you know what, we put them in something, yay? And that's kind of the way things are handled most of the time. It's like, oh, we pat ourselves on the back, something's done, you know? But that's not with the outcome in mind. So I'll digress because I'm rambling. But I said all that to say that the idea of transitional, the idea of temporary is a gap. It's a gap that is not always, you know, recognized as a solution, but it's a part of a solution. I always said, if you grow an inch, you've grown. It doesn't mean you haven't grown, right? If I intend to grow, you know, a meter, I got to grow an inch first, right? And I got to, you know, give myself, you know, a pat on the back if I'm making an inch, understanding that I intend to, you know, land at a meter, right? So analogously, I like the idea of some temporary solutions that are a part of our portfolio of offerings.
I do want to remind the council that we still have the committee discussions. Part of us. And as well, we have a closed session that we have to do tonight.
Oh, that wasn't on... We didn't get that. That wasn't... I ain't seen no memo about that.
We didn't get the closed session.
We didn't get no memo about that, seriously. But the other side, Mayor, for this, hopefully soon, we will be able to present something because luckily, we're having conversations with the county regarding us doing something, to me, turning this whole conversation around housing upside down on its head and how we really can do some work together. I highlighted the Mecklenburg County Hotel conversion because that's where the energy and committee on the conversation was without having the full details. Yes, corporate community needs to be at the table because this is all hands on deck. That other piece, I'm not touching. I'm just going to say now, there is no version of any alternative universe where I'm going to support putting our most vulnerable in any connection with something that long-term can hurt you even more. I am not doing that. Yet, the county and the city are getting ready to start some very real conversations. But what we also need to think about and have clear understanding on is if we're supporting anything, whether we're trying to push for a home for all or whatever it is, if it is not going to accept families, meaning that mother and father and child, that mother with a son and a daughter. Because what we're doing currently are splitting. We're seeing that the young men cannot go with their parent and their female sibling. You're not sending your child to a homeless shelter by themselves. It is unsafe. So you have couples that the women can only go here, men can go there. So unless it's going to... Unless we're going to clearly have the language identified where families get to stay together, get to be unified, get access to the services that they need, that is what I would consider supporting. Other than that, the millions that we have put into this, we can be doing it better between the city and county because we'll have more control when we pull some of those litex out of it.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
So, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I guess it's Slide 9. I really appreciate what Councilmember Mayfield said earlier. There had been some discussion last time we went through these rounds that we didn't go to committee first. But having the committee have an opportunity to discuss this, I think, is extremely important. We have a business meeting next week, so on the 13th, if we need to bring this back again so that you don't have to not talk about it before the 27th. So I think this has created some flexibility for good discussions and for the staff to be able to give you feedback on some of the questions. But again, there's an opportunity for us to discuss this next week, too.
Okay, does everyone feel comfortable that we will continue this discussion? And the committee? I don't know if some people can...
If three of us show up, we're good.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, let's go on to where we had our committee discussions and ask anyone that would like to share additional information. And we'll start with Mr. Dreis.
So it's late, and therefore I'm going to take the other topic that we had in committee today and compress it. Basically, following the deferral of the vote on the community area plans until November by 60 days, the committee discussed today where we are and how we want to proceed. Just wanted the council to know that work is being done on that. The staff briefed us today on how we got to where we are. They went again over all the outreach that had been done. They mentioned that we will receive packages with all the comments and with the staff reaction to all the comments. So you will see that. And they did talk in particular about work engagement they've had with the Cherry and Steelbury Acres neighborhoods. Those discussions will continue. And I would just like to say, again, we're keeping it brief tonight. But in the next two weeks, if you can bring forward any new input that you want to provide to the staff, and if we can conclude our council comment period in two weeks' time so that they have time then to act on whatever they hear and to engage with whichever residents need to be discussed, we will try to target that date that we established before this council dissolves in order to get those plans adopted. I repeat again, these do not modify the UDO. They're just an attempt, and all of those different 14 areas, to somewhat fine-tune the plan and be responsive to concerns that we're hearing from people that the one-size-fits-all plan is not responsive for them. So that's kind of where we are. I think for now, I'll leave it at that. I'll mention our... The members of our committee are myself, Ms. Malina, Mr. Graham, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Wildington. So that's what I might have to say about that.
All right, Mr. Graham? Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. One of the things I'd like to see, when we had the webinars, they were very successful. We had really good attendance. I think that what I would like to see for the plans that affect or impact District 4, if we could do, if we could have a webinar where I could be present, I think it would be great for council members to participate in these webinars, to hear what changes are proposed, and to have the residents participate as well. Because the problem is not... We didn't delay it simply to delay it. We want... Residents want to ensure that they're being heard. And we gave an example of the Cherry neighborhood where individuals had been involved since the very beginning, and those changes weren't being incorporated. And that's not the only neighborhood. So what I would like to do, I'd like to hear from the residents with staff on the line so that... I would like to ensure that District 4 residents and the three plans that encompass District 4, I would like a webinar or some type of meeting. I think webinar is a great forum. It worked with the presentation of the plans. We had over 100 participants. So I think it's a good format. And I think it's a good idea if the other council members could... I mean, it's up to you all, but participate and hear from the residents. And then you would know why we advocated to delay the vote.
I don't question that we did delay it, but I think the staff did explain to us today in some detail the amount of engagement they'd had with residents in Cherry and some pretty significant changes they made, which in their opinion were accepted as being responsive by the residents. If you think that was a misstatement, then... But that's what they told us. And they showed us how they had dialed back the intensity of the industrial type of development that was contemplated in a fairly large area there. So I will just say again, what I'd like to ask colleagues, all of us, to do is just as members of this body and for the benefit of the staff, just get... as, as members of this body and for the benefit of the staff, just get whatever it is that you think needs to be resolved or needs to be done into them in the next two weeks. And then if we have to by a council vote, then we will tell them what they need to do. But I'm hoping that we can just sort of bring this process down. There has been an enormous amount of outreach and that's one thing, hundreds and hundreds of different efforts by the staff to connect and to hear thousand, a thousand responses that came in. And I think the suggestion that the staff hasn't done enough work to try to connect with the public is unfair to the staff, frankly. The public has to do something on its own in order to engage, and they did in the case of Cherry, and the staff talked to them.
But the numbers were, but the numbers were over 2,500 comments and only, I don't remember what the number was, but very few of, a small percentage was incorporated.
You can see every single comment and you can decide if any of those comments deserved a different reaction from the one they got. And in the next two weeks, if you would, please.
Mr. Jones, I've expressed what I'd like to see for District Four. Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The jobs and economic development committee had a really eventful meeting today and I want to try to go through a lot of information in a relatively short period of time, given the time. Given, given the time allotment that we have, the first major item on the agenda was the Bank of America Stadium modernization ground lease update. One, as you know, the $650 million investment in Bank of American Stadium that we approved a year ago. Over the last year, the city attorney's office, the Panthers, our finance department have been working to dot I's and cross T's on the agreement itself. They have finally come to a, a conclusion where all of the elements of the agreement that the council wanted has been signed off on by both the Panthers as well as our city attorney. I really want to thank him, Attorney Fox and his staff for the work they've done over the last year to get us to this point. The finance department has been heavily engaged in ensuring that financially that we are doing all the right things per the agreement. Everything that the council has asked for in the original agreement has been signed off by the Carolina Panthers, including the 27% minority women's development goal. At today's meeting, the president of the Panthers was in attendance with her staff, Kristi Coleman, which I think demonstrates a willingness to partner with the city, be a part of what we're doing. In short, we are ready now to present the final draft of that contract for council for their approval, so we can send it to the local government commission in Raleigh beginning on September 13th and the 27th. It's a two-vote process that we have to vote. This is not the first time you've heard, are hearing this. We heard it about two weeks ago. And so we're ready now to, to formalize the document so that we can prepare it, sending it on to Raleigh to begin to release in the funds to begin construction on the stadium itself. That's item number one. Item number two was executing a lease with Katz for a lot that the Panthers will need to stage construction. And so our second item was, we discussed that, which is again, this is not new news for the council. We've talked about this before. We're bringing this for, for a formal vote for the council. But again, this is really dotting I's and crossing T's. Again, a lease agreement for the Katz lot for the Panthers to stage construction-related activities. And the third item, which is something I think was really good news, the Panthers announced again that they will be constructing a 44-hundred-seat-capacity performance venue on the north, northwest side of the stadium on Graham Street. It's approximately two acres. The council approved the building of such a facility with the rezoning that we approved in April, in April of this year. It should be noted that there is no public funding for the construction of the operation, no incremental land added to the ground lease for the stadium or the fieldhouse, activation of the stadium and its concept shared with the council in 2024. So we did talk about this in general. Now we're talking very specifically about what it is, a performance center, where it's located. Again, no council funding, no council lease arrangement for the land. They will use the existing parking that's in close proximity to the facility itself. Again, multi-facet local benefits, jobs, hospitality, tourism, supporting more tax revenue, supports uptown vibrancy, and fills a void in the local venue inventory. Now that's a short explanation for a lot of work that we did for the last year from the attorney's office. Again, we've heard this two weeks ago, you're hearing it again tonight. This was voted out of council with a five, oh, the committee rather, I'm sorry, with a five-zero vote in favor to move it on to the council for your consideration.
Councilmember Graham, I think you stated September 17th and September.
September 13th and the.
Was it September or October?
October, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure.
You're absolutely right, October.
17th and October 27th.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, next week and then the 27th for council to first, to take their first initial vote and then the, the last vote on the 27th. So I'll pause to see if any committee members want to chime in in reference to it.
I just wanted to note that the team demonstrated the importance of the lease amendment by winning yesterday.
I know. Wasn't that, wasn't that kind of good?
Yeah, yeah.
They knew they were coming before council today.
We don't know because we just try our best. Okay, Mr. Mitchell, anything?
No, any comments in reference to this?
Oh, no.
Yeah, all right. So, so that's the Panthers. I think we're in a good place with them. I mean, Kristi, President Coleman, and I have been talking frequently and they are really excited about what's about to happen over there. And again, Mr. Fox came in and provided a lot of energy in reference to the negotiations. So I'm going to thank you personally for that. Second item was, we identified several funding requests that came before the council, if I can find my notes, in reference to the Historic Excelsior Club. The second item was for Do Greater as well as the Spangler Market. They both came to us seeking funding from our ARCO dollars and I just misplaced my notes.
You want to see their slides?
Yes, 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 thank you. From our ARCO dollars and they requested funding that we, again, with a five-zero vote, supported $1.5 million for restoration of the Historic Excelsior Club, $500,000 for the State's Full Grocery Store, the Spangler Market, and then another $750,000 for Do Greater Charlotte. This would exhaust our ARCO dollars, but the council, this committee recommended with a five-zero vote that we move this along to council for consideration. As you know, the Historic Excelsior Club, Batesville Road, rich in history, legacy, and tradition, we're not investing in the club, we're investing in the revitalization of the historic Batesville Road corridor, along with the other investments we've already made on the corridor on the corner of Batesville Road and La Salle. This investment is on the Batesville Road in Oakline and hopefully in 2026, there'll be an additional investment at the Five Point near Johnson C. Smith University. The State's Full Grocery Store is a partnership. I should mention that the county as well will put in $1.5 million for the Historic Excelsior Club. The State's Full Grocery Store, again, addresses food desert on that side of town. It was presented to the council, the committee today. The county also is a partner and I think the county is going to put in $1.5 million to support the grocery store. Our investment will be $500,000. The committee heard a presentation today from staff and again, voted five-zero to advance this to the council for more consideration. And then lastly, Do Greater was seeking a $750,000 investment to fund its their construction project. They have a number of community partners already invested with them. And as you know, they've already have one site. This will be their uptown location. And again, this is what's our second time hearing, this particular presentation in reference to seeking our investment. So the committee advanced all three with a favorable outcome. Again, the Historic Excelsior Club, $1.5 million. County will mesh that as well with $1.5 million. The State's Full Grocery Store, $500,000 from the city. The county will put in $1.5 million. And then Do Greater, which is a $750,000 commitment that we sign off on. And I'll pause to see if my committee members have any other questions.
Mrs. Mayor?
So how about the institute? Is that on the slide?
Yes, so we're going to, we defer that conversation. That conversation more than likely will be picked up next year. This probably was our last ED committee meeting of the year. And there's some, there's some, we have to talk about that in reference to recent emails we received from our federal authorities, et cetera. We just got to look at that with clear eyes.
Okay. And I know you mentioned ARPA funding source for all three, but I see on slide number 13, you got Pago for, so how much was it ARPA and how much was it from Pago for Excelsior Club and Spangler's Market? It could be part of the follow-up report, just.
The manager will take that.
All right, so you had a little bit over $2 million left for ARPA. And in the corridors, there was a million dollars that were, are associated with these types of projects, these P3 projects, public-private partnerships. So you pull the half, the million dollars from the corridors for these types of projects, plus a little bit over $2 million would cover these three projects.
So, I'm sorry, what, I guess how much of it will come from Pago? That's what I'm asking.
$1 million.
Okay, okay, and the remaining is from ARPA? So we exhausted ARPA dollars?
Yes.
So there is nothing left for the, there is another ask?
Or whatever, right?
Okay, all right.
No more ARPA.
That's all I have.
Okay. And the third item, Vice Chairman, you want to take that one?
I'm going to do it with my colleague. This was a Molina and Mitchell amendment. We went to Seattle, what, four years ago?
It's been two, three?
Three years ago and we saw Ike make a presentation of kiosk. And so Councilmember Molina and I got excited. We came back, we said, we need to do this in our corridors and our MSDs. So it's no cost to the city. And I think Councilmember Driggs, you asked a great question, what's the annual revenue we can expect? And they like 972,000, about 17 million over a 20-year period of time. City Manager, thank you for being creative and calling it a pilot. Somebody like me wanted to roll out 120 to compete with Raleigh, but you say, slow your roll. And so thank you, Mr. Chair, for pushing this through. And I think this is going to be great for our corridors and for our municipal service districts. Good job.
So we get revenue from this with no cost?
No cost? Hey!
I hate to drag this out, but what is it?
It's kiosk.
Kiosk.
Like this?
They display.
Directions.
Directions. Restaurant.
It's even got an internet connection.
Yeah.
You get, it's got, it's, it's got advertisements, all of that.
Yeah, there are a lot of ads on here, I assume.
And I guess when we have our formal vote on this, there'll be a lot more information for, and a lot, it'll be a lot slower presentation, I'm sorry.
Hello, no cost stuff.
There, there will be some sort of restrictions on certain content, right?
Yeah, they control the content.
Yeah, they, there are restrictions. You're not going to have.
Exactly.
Yes, we're not going to be doing that. Yeah. Ms. Mayfield, Ms. Mayfield, did you have a comment or a question?
Well, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So for clarification, one, thank you, committee chair, vice chair, and members for going through this. I think somewhere along the line, conversations start to blur.
Mm-hmm.
So I do have sadness about the fact that once we do this, what we have left in ARPA is completed, yet at the same time, I'm happy to hear that because I think county had already allocated all their ARPA a while ago. I wanted, and which chairman, you can have staff or someone follow up with me later. We started the conversation regarding Do Greater back in 2023. For whatever reason, we're now in 2025, but during that time, the new opportunity with Excelsior, because I believe I asked staff at your last meeting, there was some money that we put in with the last buyer, I think it was like 250,000 or so. Did we get that money back?
Yes.
So that 250 is going towards this 1.5 ask, or we're saying this 1.5 ask is coming out of Pago and ARPA? Where's that 250 that we originally put?
Yeah, I believe Councilmember Mayfield, that 250 came out of just the general fund and went back to the general fund last fiscal year, but I can give you an accounting of where.
That would be helpful if we took that out of general fund for that conversation. Either way, if we got the money back, where is the money when we're looking at this? I'm hoping also, Mr. Manager, now that we have leadership in the economic development department, that we don't find ourselves in this type of position again, where conversations are started and there's not a clear trail and a timeline from your office down of expectations of moving things forward. Because now we have these three conversations and hearing about Spangler's Market, that was the first time that I ever heard anything about it. So for them to even be considered in this conversation, when we've had these other two big pieces that have been out there for a number of years that we've been working with or working around on some level, is a little bit challenging versus less support staff creating an actual process where there's a timeline of movement. And if there's challenges, then we know this is put to the side while they work on it so that we're not caught unaware or something new is brought to the table when we have an outstanding conversation that should have been identified and moved forward one way or another. But I am happy and excited that for those of us that had the chance to go to Boston and hear what some of the things that they're doing, knowing that we had some amazing opportunities right here on the ground to support, to make transformational change, I am happy to hear that out of committee, it was unanimous to move it forward. And I do look forward to all of us supporting the funding requests for not only Do Greater and the work that Mr. McNilly is doing, but also for the Excelsior and the corridor work that Mr. Kennedy is doing.
Okay.
And then lastly, and quickly, we did take up the referral that the mayor sent to us. Obviously, we were exhausted with time, but each committee member gave our perspective on how we need to lean in to the utilization of small businesses, especially in light of the email we received over the weekend. And our ED director indicated that he is almost done with the small business report. And I think we'll have further conversations about that moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mayor, now I apologize to council because I wanted to ask Mr. Chair, Councilmember Driggs, a question, TPD. I remember the last time we had a conversation about the area plan. One thing that I think was a sticky point for a lot of us were, we had 2,500 comments. Did you all have any kind of conversation about qualifying or the process of them going to the plan? I think there was discussion, we had a lot of comments, only 14 made it to the plan. So did you all talk about justifying or process how a comment goes to the process to get to the area plan? Any of yous know it's the.
The staff talked to us, it's 2,500, right? So they talked to us in broad terms about how they. So they talked to us in broad terms about how they, how they basically sorted the comments, right? Some of the comments were just observations, and some of them were not really actionable because they were things like, we've got to stop the growth in Charlotte entirely. And then they had a shorter list of the ones that they responded to by saying, okay, we have done this.
Okay.
They made changes that affected, I think, about 6% or 7% of the land area of Charlotte, actual modifications. And the key benefit of all of this is we now have, we will have, area plans for the entire city, whereas right now, some high percentage of the city only has 20- and 30-year-old plans that were adopted. So I think the best thing is you will receive from the staff, they're going to circulate electronically everything, all the comments. You can scan them, look at them, you can see the staff responses, and as I said, if in the next two weeks, we could get feedback from council to the extent that there is something that's been left out or requires further attention, and the staff is also actively engaging not only in the, in these two conversations, but in other engagement with residents on specific issues that have been raised. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I believe that ends our discussion.
I'll say you have two more committees.
Two more committees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, going to do housing and BGIR.
Housing has the big, I thought that we just did.
Housing.
Housing, yeah, they...
So BGIR.
BGIR.
Yes, and I thought the...
So for housing, we had three items. So we only did Housing Trust Fund, but how about the first item about the funding, federal funding challenges, as well as the quality of life?
Mayor, I promise I can do that one in three minutes.
I'm with you. I'm still here.
You ready? For our housing report out, of which we would gladly send the email out to everyone, thankfully, staff just gave us an update. We are actually looking better than was anticipated as far as the federal government. We actually, they are talking about not funding home, but that isn't going to hurt us as much based on where we are in the community. The other great opportunity in it is we actually received $283 million more than what was anticipated for some of our funds, which is puts us in a really good position. We wanted to make sure that regardless of what happens financially in the government, we will be able to continue to help our community and our partners, so we are taking that very seriously. Then the last piece is we had our quality of life update, of which that one is our policy referral for community safety, the partnerships that we have, which is also, we can make sure the staff sends that out to share with everyone, but it is the sequential interself model through Charlotte Mecklenburg, so yet another partnership with the county. So we are actually doing a lot more with the county today than in previous years, but it was really a great breakdown of the models going back to 2015 to where we are today and learning that it takes all of us at the end of the day. But of course, Dr. Wallington was really excited when she got to see the breakdown since, you know, her and Ed love numbers and charts. So this right here is really a great way of looking at law enforcement, emergency services, initial detention, court hearings, jail and courts, even though there's challenges around eliminating cash bail, reentry and community corrections. Some of this actually ties right into some of the housing requests. We just need a little bit more clarification on it. Those were the recommendations regarding our policy referral. Nothing actually needed to be referred out to come to committee. Everything was just basically an update, and that is your condensed version of the report.
Well, I thought the police officers were really, really helpful in the discussion, and the captain that was on the end really did a good job, so I just wanted to say that. So now, I think this is our last report.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, so I'll...
Before we go into closed session.
Okay, so we had three items for our BGIR committee. First, we got a report from internal audit. Ms. Adams walked us through the audits that's been completed, status of each audit, and what's in plan, as well as, we provided feedbacks to Ms. Adams about what we have heard from constituents. Councilmember Johnson had sent this request over to me from District Four residents about need for putting RFP out there for external auditors, because we've been using the same audit team for external audit for a while, and that's just the standard business practice. So we will be getting a follow-up report on that. And we also got insight, I mean, several constituents are interested in providing sort of community input in our audit process, so we discussed that to see what other cities are doing to engage community in our internal audit process. So there will be some discussion on that, our follow-up report. Second item we had was the quality of life referral and public safety issue, which is really focuses on our, what tools and legislative support that we need to strengthen our public safety, because we know the conversation is not just about policing, but it's about trust, accountability across all levels, across the entire system. So DA, courts, mental health, and there were several items that were discussed, including supporting our law enforcement, to be, all of these items to be included in our legislative agenda or some sort of letter that will, we are, we discussed in collaborating with our Housing and Safety Committee. But we know that District Attorney's Office is getting 10 additional district attorneys. It's just a drop in the ocean. We know to operate at full capacity, we will need at least 144 prosecutors to get to where we need to be. We also talked about investment in mental health. We talked about strengthening qualification for magistrates to ensure that they have the training and qualification, because they are the first line of defense for a lot of judicial decisions. And we also talked about re-establishing local juvenile center. We know that we lost that facility during COVID, so our youth are being transported away, away from the support system like family, schools. So that would also be part of our request so that state can invest in reopening a facility that provides wraparound services for juvenile. But in closing, it was just all about how we can work across various other agencies, especially General Assembly, the county, the DA's office, our judicial system, to put together a comprehensive package. So more to come on that, but the committee asked staff to pull together a summit similar to the housing summit we had done a few years ago, that will bring together all the parties, all stakeholders that I mentioned, and then we will discuss a shared ecosystem of public safety. So more details to come on that, and we will share with full council. I and Councilwoman Watlington plan on meeting next week to discuss what that looks like.
Along with?
Yes, along with Councilmember Graham. And last, but not the least, we had a policy referral on financial stewardship, thanks to the mayor. So, you know, the committee worked on financial partner policy for at least as long as I remember. So we're trying to have, adopt that process for all nonprofits. So whether you apply with, through financial partners or other agents or other departments, there should be one policy across all departments. So staff is going to gather information, they are going to bring it to us for recommendations, so more to come on that, but just stay on the lookout for financial stewardship. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
You mentioned 144 was the full staffing for the District Attorney's Office. How many do they have now?
So I'll tell you, the number is, I have it written down. So currently, they are operating at 84.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that ends our committee meeting discussion. I'm now going to ask our attorney to... Oh! All right, so, go ahead. So I'm going to ask, we're going to go into closed session, and I'm going to ask our attorney to give us a...
Yes, if I can have a motion go into closed session by the council pursuant to North Carolina Journal Statute 143-318186 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of employment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. That's the motion.
So, Mo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? I don't see anyone in opposition, so we will now have those folks...